Thank you for coming tonight. Welcome to City Council Meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items may be considered, excuse me, two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. The, we'll start with Pastor Kurt Hedlund from Bethany Baptist Church for tonight's invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Pastor.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the blessings that we enjoy as residents of this community. We recognize that as a community, we are better off economically than many other towns. We are safer than many other communities. We have resources that are greater than many other towns with our land and our sun. We are older demographically, and so we have many seniors in our midst, and we pray that we would treat them well, give wisdom and guidance to our seniors center. We pray that you would provide volunteers for lend a hand and for Meals on Wheels and our other voluntary groups. Though we are economically better off than many towns, I remember a couple of years ago when it was reported that at Andrew Mitchell School, something like 40% of the students qualified for free lunches. So, we pray that as a community, we would treat those who struggle economically well, give us wisdom, and especially give teachers and law enforcement officials, emergency aid, and in our churches that deal with people who struggle financially. Pray that you would guide our meeting tonight, that we would discuss things well and thoroughly, and that there would be a spirit of civility. We pray for our town officials, that you would give them strong consciences, that they would seek to do always what is right. And so I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, thank you Pastor for those words. We'll move now to public announcements. Any public announcements this evening? We'll check.
There's one, but he wants to wait until after the oath of office.
Okay, thank you. Any fourth graders who have not had their agendas autographed by us or would like to? Could we get the fourth gr- oh, please come up, we'll go ahead and get that signed for you.
Hello.
How you doing?
So who's your teacher this year? This level, we don't want him to miss normal students.
Yeah.
Well, we'll do this, we'll make a trade here.
Do you want me to do it? You got it. Thank you.
Who knew fourth graders could be so quiet?
Again, the fourth graders are working on their Nevada citizenship. This is part of it, for them to attend a council meeting. If all of you fourth graders would like to stand, we'll get video evidence that you were indeed here tonight, and give you a round of applause. Thank you for coming. All right, thank you again. And now we have the administration of oath of office to firefighters Ryan Bodley, Jason Dardano, and Carl Ford.
We'll all do this at once, so you state your name, and I tell you to state your name, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Jason Dardano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government.
And the Constitution and government.
Of the State of Nevada.
Of the State of Nevada.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance.
Any ordinance.
Resolution or law.
Resolution or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will perform well.
And I will perform well.
And faithfully all the duties of firefighter.
And faithfully all the duties of firefighter.
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
Of Boulder City, Nevada.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalty of perjury.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yet I'm offered so much.
And again, I just want to make mention that these are three new firefighter positions for us, so we're glad we were able to increase the number of people out there and hopefully give some other folks an opportunity to get some training and rest.
And congratulations to the new firefighters. I'm not near as eloquent and thoughtful as the city manager, but we do have a birthday, and for the record, it's not today, but Council Adams, congratulations on your birthday. We have a cake here for you. And just so you know, these birthdays come sooner as an elected official because you age faster. And so...
Well, don't let the engine leave yet, Chief. We may need it. Shall we sing to you? Anybody want to do the happy birthday? Well, Gloria, you said sure. Well, happy birthday, Councilman.
Let me make my wish here real quick.
Go ahead.
I'll point out, there's a guitar on here, some music notes, and this is great. I'm going to certainly enjoy this after the meeting.
All right. We will then start with our opening public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person has up to five minutes to speak on a specific agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Snyacken?
Good evening, Council. It's my great pleasure to see you up there. I support you heartily. I'm very glad to see you there. You look good there, Mr. McManus. Could I have gotten my agenda signed? I dropped out of school in the fourth grade.
You've aged out, sir.
Thank you. There are a couple of things that bring me here this evening to discuss. I totally support the hiring of a special counsel. I think it's important to keep everything together and not have any confusion and have a clear record of everything. I think that's an extremely wise idea. On tract 350, I feel that that should be held. There are issues with it. For one, the appraisal is dated in February. This is now almost November. By the time you get a sale, it'll be time to do the appraisal over again. So that would be a consideration to not confuse a buyer. Within that, there's a huge drop in the price that needs to be investigated. You didn't get a copy of the appraisal. That was very wrong. I don't know how that could happen, that you're dealing in a multimillion dollar transaction and the city council isn't given the appraisal nor is it posted on the website. Something is amiss with that. There needs to be taken into account different options of going owner builder, selling it in smaller blocks, taking into account potential increase in lot through variances. We got taken to the cleaners on the storybook deal that should have been cut, and it shouldn't have been, the store shouldn't have been given away. So I would like to see that held, especially since Mr. Morris has cast a shadow bringing up the open meeting law, what he alleges is a violation. I was mortified to see this headline in the paper that was the effect of Mr. Morris's declaration. First of all, there is not an open meeting law violation, in my opinion. I submitted a package to you that I've researched and I have some experience in the open meeting law from my own filings. I've also submitted a letter in support from a very prominent attorney who I provided this and is familiar. She said that there wasn't a violation, and she said that Mr. Morris is being a bully, and it was inappropriate, that you don't stop, you either bring it up at the meeting that there's a problem, but you don't go after the meeting and then report it to the paper, and that Celia printed that without doing any research is another example of being attacked by the press. So I would hope that you do not accept Mr. Morris's opinion, even though I have an opinion and he has an opinion and my attorney has an opinion. The ultimate arbiter is the Attorney General, and if it gets filed, then so be it. But I wouldn't accept something based on what's occurred. First of all, it was agendized properly, notices were sent out, it wasn't a public hearing. The topic was for an action item. The two items that Mr. Morris cites, the turnabout and also the median, that was in the package. You don't list every one of a thousand things in the caption. We've never done that. That's ridiculous. And for him to come back after the meeting and then put that in the paper is an outrage, and I believe an apology is in order, or certainly more explanation that's on point for what he's already said and not a different account. You have to evaluate this. You cannot take any public official or any staff member's word without doing your own independent thinking. That's what the charter provides for. You are the ultimate arbiter of what has happened, and you need to study the open meeting law and take some time. Take time to study this. But I wouldn't want you to see and declare that you're guilty of an open meeting law when you haven't done one because Mr. Morris has come out of the woodwork and put that into the paper. I feel that's very, very wrong, and that's the primary reason that I'm here this evening, and that's why I've submitted this to you. It was agendized, it did contain all the proper information. Anybody that wanted it could have gotten a copy of it. It was available at the meeting by just asking Tammy or Lorraine. I don't see what the issue was or why this had to make the front page of the paper. It's another attempt to me at embarrassing this council, and I don't appreciate it. Considering Mr. Morris's record, he was involved in an open meeting law violation when his resume was not given out to the public. That was a violation of the open meeting law, and he was acting city attorney. He did nothing to correct it. He hid his resume during the hiring process and caused the city to take an open meeting law violation. Mr. McManus asked Lorraine Crum several times. It was declared at the meeting. Mr. Woodbury was told that the resume was required, and he committed and embarrassed the city. He's committed charter violations, he hasn't filed public records that are disclosed. I will save the other 20 items I have when Mr. Morris comes up for review, but I don't appreciate this kind of stuff, and if Mr. Morris wishes to explain himself, but beyond the point, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. McCoy?
Oh, Mayor and Council, I'm Duncan McCoy, Boulder City resident, two-term former city councilman. I'm here to talk tonight about item number 17 and item number 18, and I'll try to be brief. Item number 17, the discussion of repeal of automatic utility rate increases. I suggest this discussion be postponed until your contracted rate study is completed and you have the report in your hands. Utilities Manager Dennis Porter has suggested that this item wait until the rate study is completed, and I agree with that, that the discussion is premature. It's always better to make decisions with the benefit of current information in your hands than it is to make decisions without the information, and it's got to wait. Item number 18, the discussion of hiring a special attorney. I suggest that the council not waste taxpayer money by hiring another attorney to advise in areas falling within the responsibilities of the city attorney. Subitem A, Nevada Open Meeting Law Standards and Requirements. The council already has an attorney for this. Part of the city attorney's job is to try to keep the council out of trouble by giving advice on open meeting law. He's already on the payroll, and you should use him. You may not like what he has to say, but soothsaying is not his job. You all should take a look at the Nevada Attorney General's website. It has published open meeting law opinions going back for years and years. It's worth your time to read through these, and it won't cost the city hundreds of dollars an hour while you do. Lots of stuff in there, good way to spend a rainy Saturday if you ever find one. Subitem B, employment contracts for municipal officers. The appointed public official's contracts are written in plain English. All of you are educated people and fully capable of understanding what these contracts say. Read them yourselves. You might want to read the exit clauses of these contracts a couple of times, should that be what you're really interested in. If that, in fact, is the case, you might ask the city attorney about possible outcomes of improper termination. I'm sure he'll tell you, it's his job to do that. And finally, subitem C, other issues as determined by a majority of the city council. This part of tonight's agenda language is too vague to be useful in any public agency's agenda. This is rather like other new business and does not describe what the council's conversation will or may cover. Again, go back and look at the AG's office and how it's ruled on cases involving vague agenda language. This is a common cause of complaints. You won't have any trouble finding parallel cases, and you could have done a better job of describing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Johnson?
My name is Ross Johnson. I just briefly, two things. I have a question is, Mr. Snyacken's documents that he referred to, are they available to the public or are they private?
It's public.
Okay. Were they back there? No, but my question was, were they back there? Oh, but they are, okay. I'll get one running finished then. The next one is on the rate increase, and quite frankly, I might be happy if that happened, that you eliminated the rate increase. But the real question is, you've got a committee, and if I remember correctly, there's also a consultant. And I'm just wondering if you're interested in what the committee or the consultants were going to come up with, or whether you're just moving forward on that one. And just a question on attorney. I like what Mr. McCoy said about things that are available from the Attorney General with that respect, and I think that that resource should be used. Now, I don't think the Attorney General will give you an opinion based on a phone call, but at least that would start some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
In order to speak about the Gingerwood one, item...
Please state, please state your name.
Yeah, Ken Green, Gingerwood. It's eight B, I believe, on the sheet. On, I scribbled so bad I can't even read my writing here. On 9/18, a planning commission had a meeting on the Gingerwood expansion, and at that point, we raised the issue that the public notice and the documentations that come to this committee for today to be reviewed were inaccurate as far as the address and the name of the ownership on the paperwork that we had. That could have been corrected at the meeting when they approved it, but they chose to leave it and bring it forward to you at this point. The, on the April, I'm sorry, on 9/23, I provided a letter to all the committee members and the planning commission head with an appeal, saying that this was a problem, and listed a number of issues, some of them public safety issues. And from that, I was told that a couple of days later, that it had to be on a specific form. I couldn't do it in a letter. So we provided a letter in a form to the council, and you all got it on 9/26 because I handed it out. So there was no question about the appeal being public and part of the public record. Since that was surfaced, and since I brought that out in the public service, public safety issues with the fire and not having a wall, and the things that were given away as far as variances to, as part of this, could, you know, maybe need to be looked at a little bit more. However, in all fairness, since this appeal was never processed, and there's an argument about because it was on the wrong paper, didn't get in within a day of the right date, what I want to do is formally withdraw that appeal and move on because I don't think that, basically, I found out from the information from the staff that a number of my assumptions were wrong, because there's laws written about the fact that a mobile home that we live in is not in the city of Boulder, considered a residence, and I thought it was maybe. And so therefore, it affected my position on the zoning request. So, having said all that, I would let that, go ahead and proceed without any objections from my part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sir?
Good evening. Richard Stewart. I've been a longtime Boulder City resident since a child. So I'm here to speak on two agenda items. One of them is, I believe, 13, and that is about the Bristol Cone area and the sale of that land. I got wind and notification of this information just through the media, unfortunately. So based off the open violation law, I believe, in my opinion, it was, and that is because the citizens of that neighborhood, which I am a landowner of that neighborhood, and I was not notified, neither by mail or any other notification from the city. So in my opinion, it's a violation to me because those citizens were not notified of this change. The information was obviously in the packet on what was going to happen. This was all decided, what, 20 years ago? From my understanding, I could be wrong. But this information was in there. It was going to be spent that way, it was going to be sold that way. That was the information that was going to be proposed at that time, not anything about changing or restructuring that project. So in my opinion, us as citizens that live in that neighborhood were not properly notified of this change. I do understand that you wanted a median taken out, and in my opinion, that road is very busy. If you've never been down there on a normal daily basis, that road is a thorough way for the golf course, the old golf course from Las Vegas. There's tons of people going to the golf course there. Not only that, there's people that are in that neighborhood. Halloween, if you'd like to, come on down. I'll show you how many people go in that neighborhood. So a median is, in my opinion, a very resourceful thing for that area, especially if you go to develop it by selling the other part of the land. I think that's all I have on that agenda. The other one about the city attorney, you guys yourselves went out when you guys were running for council, talking about spending money and wasting money in this town. I believe you're doing that now. In my opinion, by going out and trying to hire another city attorney, which we already have one on the books, you complained about how much he was getting paid. Citizens in this town were complaining about how much he was getting paid and said it was too much. And now you guys are hiring another attorney. We're wasting money, in my opinion. That's what you guys said, that's what I'm going off of right now. Okay, so I'm just, that's just my opinion. So, also, the agenda, or the items that you would like to foresee for the other attorney going into it, they're very vague. You don't really tell us what you're going to look into, how much money you're going to spend on those type of items. You only give a few things, and then after that, whatever we decide. That's pretty open, in my opinion, and I think that needs to be narrowed down. As citizens, you're spending money, our money, you ran on that. I'd like for you guys to be more open about what exactly you're planning on looking into, not just, we'll figure it out, because that's what it seemed like in that proposal. So, that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Woodbury?
Thank you, Rod Woodbury, longtime Boulder City resident. First off, thank you for your service. I know it's a big commitment, and I really appreciate your time you put in. I want to compliment you two on several of the items on the agenda tonight. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but just projects that I think that we do need to proceed with and that appears you are proceeding with. Railroad Museum Road, a couple items on Copper Mountain Solar 5. These are great projects. Considering the utility refinancing of the bonds, it'd be better to pay that off, but the next best thing would be to refinance if we have the ability to do that in favorable circumstances. Increase in the area for solar development, and then of course, tract 350, the golf course lots. I'm not going to focus on those tonight, but I think those are worthy projects that we need to proceed with in whatever form we decide to in the end. I want to focus on items number 17 and 18. I'm going to talk about 18 first, which is the potential action item for retention of special counsel. Obviously, if this is necessary, it's a critical issue. I mean, you know, to discuss employment contracts of the, you know, management, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, municipal judge, these would be really important for us to know what's going on here as citizens. But I am confused by what I see there. Obviously, in 18C, other issues as determined by a majority of council, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that means, and I can't really give public comment on it. As far as the employment contracts go, I'm confused by that as well. I see the memos that Mr. McManus put in the agenda packet. I see, for instance, the utility items that he gives lots of reasons for, which I don't necessarily agree with many of them, but in the special counsel item, I don't see any reasons put in there, which I hope you're going to enlighten us tonight on what those reasons are, because I'm only left to speculate, you know? Are we going to review these contracts of these officials to terminate them? Are we going to review them so we can renegotiate their contracts or try to renegotiate them? Do you have questions regarding the form or, you know, the specific provisions in those contracts for future reference, or what is it? I'm left to wonder, just looking at the item, because it just says, you know, council members may have their reasons, I believe there are reasons, but it doesn't really go into those reasons. And so as a citizen, I don't really have the ability to comment on that at this point because I don't know what those reasons are.
Obviously, if this is necessary, it's a critical issue. I mean, you know, to discuss employment contracts of the, you know, management, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, municipal judge, these would be really important for us to know what's going on here as citizens. But I am confused by what I see there. Obviously, in 18C, other issues is determined by a majority of counsel. I mean, I don't know what that means, and I can't really give public comment on it. As far as the employment contracts go, I'm confused by that as well. I see the memos that Mr. McManus put in the agenda packet. I see, for instance, the utility items that he gives lots of reasons for, which I don't necessarily agree with many of them. But in the special counsel item, I don't see any reasons put in there, which I hope you're going to enlighten us tonight on what those reasons are because I'm only left to speculate, you know? Are we going to review these contracts of these officials to terminate them? Are we going to review them so we can renegotiate their contracts or try to renegotiate them? Do you have questions regarding the form or, you know, the specific provisions in those contracts for future reference? Or what is it? I'm left to wonder, just looking at the item, because it just says, you know, council members may have their reasons. I believe there are reasons, but it doesn't really go into those reasons. And so, as a citizen, I don't really have the ability to comment on that at this point because I don't know what those reasons are. I... As far as the open meeting law standards goes, I will echo what's already been said, I think, by a couple people, which is the Attorney General is really the gatekeeper of that. The Attorney General has the enforcement authority, the investigative authority. They are the ones that give the opinions on open meeting law violations, and really, they're the go-to people for educating you as well. So, if you need extra help, which it seems like maybe this is... I'm not really sure on that one either, but if you need extra help understanding the open meeting law, they could provide that training for you, just as the Ethics Commission would for ethics issues. It seems like, again, I'm speculating here because I don't know what the agenda items don't let me know, but it seems like we're trying to circumvent the city attorney, maybe trying to get around the open meeting law because I've seen lots of different attempts to question the open meeting law. I hope that's not the case, but it's vague enough. And then, let me just move to, in my final minute here, to the utility rate increases. Again, like Mr. Johnson, I'd be the first to jump up and down if my utility rates were going to go down. I mean, that's a good thing. Everybody wants their lower utility rates. But when you're deliberating this, let's not forget that, you know, we've got capital projects in not just tens of millions of dollars, but hundreds of millions of dollars that we're looking at. We've got aging utility infrastructure. We've got streets that haven't even been addressed in a substantial way for years and years. And you've got other capital projects, city facilities. You've got a pool that people are wanting. And so, then also, don't forget the debt. The raw water line debt is $10 million in interest that you could save if you pay that off. And that's 650 per person, maybe thousands per household, less than the rate payers would have to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Volz and then Mr. Miller, please.
Good evening. For the record, Fred Volz. I'd like to talk about item 17 first. It deals with the automatic annual utility rate increase. And my belief is the automatic increases need to be rescinded. The October 2 spreadsheet from the Utility Department shows over $21 million of budgeted but unaccounted-for capital spending projects. Despite over two months of effort, the use and status of those monies has not been fully reconciled, and there is no demonstrated shortage of funding for utility capital projects or operations, as city staff have asserted in their position paper. Rate increases should only be on an as-needed basis and fully justified. Item 7 calls for proceeding with the refinance of the water bonds. The support materials lack any demonstration of when savings will occur through a spreadsheet. More troubling, the suggested financial institution, Chase, requires 125% coverage of debt service excluding the 20% utility reserves that we already have and $5 million of rate stabilization reserves listed in Article 7. Chase effectively demands the continuance of automatic annual rate increases, even though they are unnecessary for the soundness of utility operations, and make utility service that much more expensive for the many city residents living on limited incomes. The city's summary of investments in cash dated at the end of last month shows a total of over $87 million parked with Wells Fargo and earning little interest. Why not just pay off the $23 million bond altogether since no prepayment penalty applies? The payoff would eliminate any need for further annual debt service by utility rate payers and leave the city with $64 million of reserves and operating capital relative to a $35 million annual operating budget. The city's residents would have zero long-term debt. Item 18B also merits comment. We need an objective review and list of viable options as to what prior city officials have contractually obligated taxpayers to cover. Researching the city clerks and city attorneys' compensation packages, then comparing them against comparably sized Nevada cities, we appear to be grossly overpaying the people occupying these two positions. The city clerks of Mesquite, Carson City, and Fernley received $68,000 to $86,000 of total 2018-based pay. In contrast, Boulder City's city clerk received $138,750, or almost $52,000 more than the top pay of those three. These numbers exclude fringe benefits such as taxpayer contributions to a very generous public employees' retirement fund. The city attorneys of Mesquite, Carson City, and Fernley earn total 2018 pay of between $122,000 and $128,000. Of note, Carson City is more than three times the population of Boulder City. Yet, total annual pay for Boulder City's city attorney is just shy of $178,000 or $50,000 more than the top pay, again excluding fringe benefits. Finally, item 19 on tonight's agenda lacks justification. Constructing new dedicated soccer fields in Veterans Memorial Park that have no prospective utilization numbers do not pencil out financially, consume money that could be better employed on urgent capital repair projects, and require more finite water resources are frivolous at best and absurd at worst. No numbers have been provided for ongoing new maintenance costs at these proposed soccer fields. When and if soccer tournaments would be held in Boulder City, Veterans Memorial Park's Great Lawn and the Park Center can be temporarily configured to accommodate the tournaments. And I would request that my comments be added verbatim to the minutes of tonight's meeting law per the open meeting laws guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Judge Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Victor Miller. I'm municipal judge in Boulder City and wish to speak on item number 18B as that position because it notes that employment contracts for municipal officers, of which the municipal judge is one. I've reviewed the agenda item. I've reviewed the backup materials, and apparently, they're... All I can assume is there might be some question about my contract, but I can't determine what that is, so I had no ability to prepare for the meeting tonight. There... It just was not clear. It was not concise. But if there is any questions regarding my contract, I wanted the council to know that I'm open and available to talk at any time to any one of you about my employment with the city and what we do over in the court and all of that. So, I just wanted to say I'm available, can help any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir? Please state your name.
Yes, my name's David McMillan. I'm one of the owners of Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. And thanks for hearing me. I appreciate it. I just wanted to... Because I see some of our residents here tonight, some that I've met, some I haven't met, but we bought Gingerwood about 18 months ago. And at the time we bought it, it had roughly an acre of property with it and one vacant lot at the end of the top street. And we... At the time, we proposed to add an additional seven spaces to the park because it is a very desirable place for seniors to live. And I would like to, you know, reiterate that it is a 55-plus park and it will remain that. We're very strict about that rule. You know, we want to keep it at 55. We've had... There's been some rumors floating around town and that we're doing this to take people out of the park and run them out of the park and try and make it a family subdivision. That is not true. We own other manufactured home parks, and all of our parks are senior, senior parks. And we have a waiting list. That's the reason we want to add on the few spaces is we have a waiting list of senior people want to come in and put homes in the park. And, you know, it's a really nice place to live. People want to live there. It's affordable, and we want to keep it that way. But, you know, with all these rumors floating around, I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, it's... We... It will be a 55-plus property, and that's the goal. And I hope the city council will see fit to let us build it because we... You know, it's not a major project, but it's just adding seven spaces on vacant land that's been sitting there for 40 years. The original owners just used it for storage, but it fits the need real well. And I'm sure, you know, within no time, people will be moving in there, wanting to move in. So, thanks for hearing me. I just wanted to clarify that, and hopefully, you'll show us favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Hoskins?
My name is Judy Hoskins. I'm speaking on item 13, which is the intent to take corrective action for open meeting law violations which occurred at the October 8, 2019 council meeting. The agenda should have stated possible violation or alleged violation. There would not have been enough time to have filed the violation, gotten it to the Attorney General's office, and for them to make... Have made a determination that a violation occurred. The city attorney, the city manager, and the city clerk have extensive training on the open meeting law, and they have previously advised council on this subject during meetings. They should continue to advise them, and I believe if a council member might be making a violation during the meetings, not after the fact, that should be addressed by one of the three individuals. I believe that this is their responsibility, and evidently, that is not being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will go ahead and close public comment then. And move to the approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk? Mr. Acting City Manager?
No changes.
And Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, recommend the removal of item number 18.
Do you have a reason?
For the reasons set forth in the materials that were provided in the packet and in order to avoid an open meeting law violation.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? I've requested item 18. I have spelled out my reasoning for doing so. I will go into further detail on that as we get to that item tonight and therefore will not be removing the item from the agenda. I will go ahead and make a motion then that we will approve the agenda as published.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. We'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, I'd just like to note that on item 1A, there was supplemental material provided to you on the dais that was missed in the packet, and so, that's available for you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager? Acting City Manager?
Consent agenda for...
Any changes?
No changes for consent.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Council, any discussion?
Mayor, I have one item that I'd like to move to off the consent agenda, item number four.
Okay, any other changes?
No.
Well, I'll make the motion then that we will approve it with the change to move item four to the regular agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, then, we will move to then item number four as our first item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kate Nuttall, the Public Works Director. Item four is a funding agreement with Regional Transportation Commission, RTC, for the design of the Railroad Museum roadway. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This one has been brought to attention by a few members of the public that I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. This is $1 million to design a road to possibly the Railroad Museum once the funding comes in for that.
Correct.
So, I've just heard some concerns over it because of just the reasoning why. Because the latest that I've heard is that the Railroad Museum will not receive funding for at least two more years and that they are still about $20 million short for any construction for their project. So, I would just like to see that this road be discussed in an open forum. The other question was that, you know... So, this is kind of providing a road to nowhere at this point, and so, there's a concern, you know, with what's going on for those businesses and have they been contacted? And, you know, there may be access to them, there may not be access, but to really have their input from the constituents who this will impact.
At this time, there's just a conceptual plan that the Railroad Museum has put together. Right now, this roadway would parallel their linear park, is what they're calling it. I have a little miniature train track on it for the kids to ride. I believe they have a restroom planned, some streetside parking. It also proposes to have four connector roads off of the Boulder City Parkway. In reviewing those, I'm not sure the two west roadways are going to actually work because of the grade changes and just the access through the businesses. The two on the east would be much easier. There's actually... It's a lot more open. Grade changes aren't as bad. And actually, trying to think ahead while the Boulder City Parkway project's going on, we asked our contractor to install a manhole on, I think it's Mezcal. It's the first roadway in anticipation of tying in a restroom into our sewer system. As for the funding for the museum, I'm not that familiar with all the details of that. I know it is going to be a couple of years out, and it might look like this road is going to nowhere for the time being, but it's also going to take nine months or so for us to design it. It'd be a year to 15 months before it even went to construction.
Can you tell me why the cost is so high for the design when there's already conceptual design out there? You know, I've seen a couple of plans as well, and they've already removed the four... You know, they moved it down to two accesses and, you know, access down to the lower businesses. So, without much other construction needs, why is there such a high cost?
The conceptual plan is just purely a conceptual plan. There is no design work with that at all. They don't take into account for any of the grade changes, moving material, excavating, bringing fill in. It doesn't account for that, utilities, any of the connection roads. It's purely just to make it look like it'll fit. And the $500,000 is just an estimate. That's all it is. If this is approved, we'll move forward with hiring a consultant. They'll come up with the engineer's estimate as they begin their design.
I have a question also. Is this the only part of this future project that RTC will be paying for?
Yep.
Okay. That's it? That was my question.
Yeah, I also kind of share some of councilman's concerns as far as if, you know, the Railroad Museum, if there are some hiccups on the line and essentially having a road to nowhere. You know, it's kind of that, you know, you have to weigh balance. You know, you don't want to be behind the game, and then, all of a sudden, we're trying to build a road while we're also trying to get the park and the railroad and all those sorts of things. But at the same time, if there is issues and we essentially have a road to nowhere, well, it seems to be quite the waste. You know, I think access is important, so if we were creating access to these businesses, that might be good to kind of help relieve some congestion on the Parkway, you know, with people coming in and out of town. Because even with the I-11, you know, it's... Even today, I still realize, you know, it can still get busy down there. So, that I would be in favor of, but if it's not really providing any additional access to these businesses and it's kind of just some pavement out there, I mean, that... I do start to have some concerns about that that I expressed, but, you know, so I'm... I don't... I guess I'm just sharing my opinions as well. don't, I guess I'm just sharing my opinions as well. I, I do have those concerns, but you did say there would be, there would be street parking there available?
Yep, there's, in the conceptual plan, there is some streetside parking along that roadway. There are some areas that it gets a little tighter where the, the miniature train makes its complete turn, but there are other plant, places that they're proposing that we could have streetside parking, and this also won't limit people parking there and walking down to the businesses, plus it also creates an alternate route for people to get off of the parkway and drive parallel to the parkway.
So if there's not necessarily road access to all of them, could there be potential that, I, I understand the gradient might, the grade might make it a little bit challenging, have some walkable access then, would that be potential to have in the concept?
Yeah, definitely.
That would make me much more comfortable than with this project.
You know, I, this came up already with the Regional Transportation Commission's. I've had a, a look at what the plans were, you know, with regard to the Southern Nevada Railroad Museum, although that construction, I think, is estimated to be two years out, I do think it's in the interest of Boulder City to show the state that we're planning for them to complete their project. You know, I think the more we can show them that the other infrastructure is already in, that might be a benefit. Regarding access to the businesses, you know, I think it's up to the businesses to decide, but there will be apparently a strip of city-owned land between this street and the businesses, is that correct?
Yeah, there would have to be some buffer between the roadway and the businesses. If I remember correctly, the property line is basically right at the rear of the businesses, and you don't want a roadway inches from that.
Okay. So as far as what they do, I suppose that's up to them. I mean, if the road goes in and they want to alter their property to provide some type of access, that's something that they can do, as long as they pay attention to our codes and do all those nice things for us. But again, I, I understand some of the concerns people might have, but we need to get as far into this project as our responsibilities are, I believe, to let the state know that we are very supportive of the project that they're doing out there. I certainly had concerns when I first saw these plans a couple of years ago about the four access roads, and when I went out and looked at where those were, even though it's city land, we have given rights of way over the years, but those rights of way are not guaranteed, but clearly they've been adopted by some of the businesses for parking and that sort of thing, so if we don't need to disrupt that, I, I think that's in those businesses' interest to, to not do that.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Have a motion for approval?
I move to approve resolution number 7011.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous then. Thank you. We'll then move on to item number seven. This is regarding the Bill 1864, Refinance of the Waterline Debt. Is that you, Mrs. Pelletier?
It's an introduction-only, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry about that. Then do we have a motion for the introduction?
I move for an introduction of Bill number 1864, waive the reading title only.
Bill 1864, an ordinance of the City Council of Boulder City, authorizing the issuance by the city of its Boulder City, Nevada Utility Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2019, and the maximum principal amount of $26 million for the purpose of refinancing the existing utility revenue refunding bonds, Series 2006 obligation, providing the form, terms, and conditions thereof. Bill 1864 will be considered at the November 12, 2019, regular city council meeting.
Thank you. Item number eight is Bill 1862, to amend the zoning map for Gingerwood to allow for additional lots. Mr. Mays?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Michael Mays, here, Community Development Director. Item item eight is regarding the Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. This is located on Gingerwood Street, on the west side of Gingerwood Street. The park is proposing to rezone a half acre from study area to the mobile home zoning classification. This is to accommodate six additional lots, as you can see with the map on the screen, in the southeast corner. In addition, there is an additional lot within the mobile home park that has not been developed. And so for your consideration tonight, you have Bill number 1862, which would rezone that half acre. In addition to that, you have Resolution 7024, which would award seven allotments to the mobile home park to allow for seven new mobile home units within the, the park. This would be for construction year 1920. So those are the two items for your consideration tonight. There is also the corresponding public hearing, and Sheldon Cullen is here representing the applicant to answer any questions, and certainly I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Adams?
There were just a couple of questions with regard to the vacancies. That was just about the lot size, correct? To continue that the Planning Commission had approved? That was just to, was that correct?
The variances, there is a couple of variances granted by the Planning Commission, including the lot size, including the requirement for putting up a CMU wall at the southern end, landscaping as well along the eastern perimeter.
And then, other than that, I just, I just wanted to compliment, you know, this sounds like you had said that you and Mr. Green had had a discussion, a person who had made some public comment, I'm just, I'm happy to hear that he also agreed, that it seems that the conversation went well. I'm, I'm, I don't know, I, I got to know some of the residents in Gingerwood when I was out campaigning, and I know it was very important to them to see, having the affordable housing out there. So I think it's an important, important thing for, for this town.
I would just like to make note, one of the concerns that Mr. Green had expressed previously was regarding the flooding, or potential flooding out there. You know, I, I do serve on the Flood Control District Board. That was one of the first things that I had spoken with the general manager of that body. There has been extensive work up above Gingerwood that has put in retention basins, those types of things, and he had informed me at that time that because of the work that had been completed, they would probably be approaching the National Flood Insurance Program to have that area removed from the flood plan because they don't feel that it qualifies any longer, is in the type of danger that it might be in the past. So I think that's good news for the folks out there in Gingerwood that that's been done. You know, I would have liked to have seen a block wall on this. Apparently, the Planning Commission found that all five of the requirements for obtaining variances were obtained, but I think that would have been nice to have a border wall of the CMU rather than a chain-link fence, but again, that's a decision the Planning Commission has already made. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Mays. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Mr. Sineikin?
I didn't study that particular issue with regard to the fence. Sitting here, I can't imagine how they're able to meet the five criteria for a variance, there being other people with similar rights, they're not being in the effect. The Planning Commission, over the past number of years, has been giving away variances like candy. They don't seem to understand the significance or the laws and the tests that need to be met, and I recommend that there be some training to go over that in compliance with what state law and the NRS suggests, and not do them based on any arbitrary matter. One that comes to mind was when Randy Shams applied for the cottages, there was a requirement for landscaping, and in their wisdom, the Planning Commission decided to waive the standards for Mr. Shams' benefit, and then they said that in the future, they would go along with allowing rock and do it by precedent on their way rather than go through the city council. So I feel that for the benefit of the community, they, these are good people, they're volunteering their time. Who's ever in charge of that commission hasn't educated them on the use of the five tests for a variance, and it's important, and that's where your issue about the block wall comes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and again, council, any questions or comments?
I have one comment. I do have some concerns with this, as it does abut city land, and I think of the future of that land is, right now, below it is blown, is zoned senior housing, I believe, and how it abuts that property, and that, like Mayor says, there is a chain-link fence that's going to, to attach to that, and there's other elements in that plan that I'm just really uncomfortable about moving forward with, and I, I don't want to get into all the details, but, you know, there is two reasons, you know, to make a rezone, there's two findings that we have to have, and I just, I think that, the first one, A, that the proposed amendment is in general conformance with the adopted comprehension plan for the city, I find no problem with that, but I do have issue with B, that this proposed amendment promotes health and safety morals of the general, the welfare of the city. So that's how, where I'm at, and that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I, I did want to make a comment about, there was a lot of talk during the campaign, and, and a lot of people come up to me and talk about affordable housing, and I think when we do have an opportunity to create even seven new homes for people who can afford, can only afford, or can afford, or wish to live in senior housing, that it be available. I know lots of people who live in Gingerwood, and they're very pleased with the life they live in Gingerwood, and so that's all I wanted to share.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah, just a comment to the findings for B. For me, the, the proposed amendment promotes the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the city. To me, I would, I would think that having housing like this in our community does absolutely conform with that idea. I mean, health, safety, general welfare, I mean, having a housing for our, your senior community, and now that is a decision of the property owner, obviously, but they seem to be very committed to that, and I don't see any reason why it would be changing. For me, I would say that I absolutely do find that, that this, this amendment does fit B as far as, as far as that's concerned, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any others? I guess we have two items then that we will need a vote on. The first is Bill 1862, is that correct, Madam City Clerk? Okay. Do we have a motion then to approve Bill 1862?
I move to approve Bill number 1862.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Excuse me. Councilmember Bridges, is that with the findings as stated in the staff report?
As, fine, as stated as the finding in the staff report. Correct.
And I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, that will be three to one then. And then on Resolution 7024? You have a motion to adopt that?
Motion to adopt Resolution number 7024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, also three to one. Okay, we'll move then to option number, excuse me, item number nine. Mr. Mays?
With respect to number nine, it is similar in that you have two items for consideration this evening and a corresponding public hearing. What item number nine relates to is amendments to the master plan. Resolution 7025 clarifies language within the master plan. You'll find in your staff report that staff has provided the existing language and put within red text the proposed changes that would be added to the master plan to help clarify language in a couple of different areas, including open lands conservation. In addition to that, Resolution 7026 refers to the corresponding map on the screen. It designates approximately 2,000 acres as open lands conservation. This corresponds with the county's designation of the same area as part of the Boulder City Conservation easement, and so we're bringing the master plan in alignment with that agreement that occurred earlier this year. And with that, I can answer any questions on either one of the resolutions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, I have a question. LDR 2, lot sizes. Why was that reduced from 7,000 to 5,000?
To recognize that we have a zoning district that allows for low-density residential at 5,000.
Councilman Adams?
What would some of that, what would be considered zoned R5 if we were to look at it right now in this, in Boulder City?
Well, if you looked at some of the older parts of our residential neighborhoods, even though they are zone R17, those lots are actually around 5,000 square feet or less. So that would be that kind of character.
And is, just out of curiosity, what neighborhoods in particular would, would those be? You're talking about downtown, like Avenue?
The Avenue Streets, yeah. So the master plan is just acknowledging that we have homes within the community that are of a smaller lot size that are single-family.
Councilman Fold?
So I'm trying to do this, referring to the changes in, under number four. So there's some acronyms that have been added to relate back to the map. However, within the article itself, so for instance, it'll say Community Commercial, and acronym is COM, but underneath that, it has CC1, CC2. So can we change those acronyms so that they are all the same across the board? So under Community Commercial, it would have COM1, COM2. It does in some parts of this master plan, but not in others.
Well, certainly I could look at that, but what I want to do is make reference to the rest of the document. Part of the reason for this correction is because of inconsistencies elsewhere.
Right.
My concern is if we make these changes here, then will it correspond to the other aspects of the, the document?
Right, which it does. The, the things that are being added correspond to the map. What they don't correspond is to one another, right underneath their own title, is what I'm referring to. And then the other question I have is that, in an effort to be more clear about the energy zone, the, we've put it underneath manufacturing, and I feel like that makes it even less clear, because most of our energy zones are in the Eldorado Valley, which does not allow for manufacturing. So my question, why we do that and not put it under another category, and I know that there's some on the map that are already zoned as MAE, which is manufacturing energy, and we're going to later on consider more of that, but I feel like when we move energy underneath manufacturing, which the title of manufacturing is Designation Intended to Provide Light Manufacturing, Wholesale Research Development, Warehouse, Distribution Indoor and Screen Outdoor, and Other Manufacturing Services Operations, it doesn't really align very well under that title, where it would align better was under our open lands, in which we use more non-commercial areas. If that makes sense to anyone.
I think my only concern with it, referring to open lands, is that, again, I think my only concern with it referring to open lands is that, again, it's all about the language being used. We're trying to make it very clear that you are manufacturing energy, that these are solar panels and solar fields. When you think of open lands, you think of open space. And if you refer to the subarea that focuses specifically within the master plan on the El Dorado Valley, it makes it very clear about the uses that are permitted there, which includes solar production, recreation uses, and open space preservation. So my only concern is if we were to denote it as open space solar to the general public, there would be more confusion than designate as energy manufacturing. Because especially with this language that's being added to the master plan for energy manufacturing, it makes it very clear what its intent is, and certainly it's nothing beyond renewable energy functions.
Okay. I'm going to have to agree to disagree. Because of the language in our charter, and where it separates that very much manufacturing away from what's being used in the El Dorado Valley, I just feel like this adds more confusion than clarification.
Mayor, may I chime in, please? Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that any changes made tonight, it would require it to go back to the planning commission.
Thank you. Do you hear in agreement with that, Mr. Mays?
The recommendation from the planning commission is with these proposed changes. I would have to confirm just to what extent the changes that the council would make, and whether we would need to revisit that with the planning commission.
It states it in the staff report that no changes can be made to the master plan request without sending the changes back to the planning commission for a report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bridges?
Yeah, in lieu of that, I was going to ask whether there was a way to include renewable energy production under the characteristics, because under the characteristics, it does not talk about that. So it might be clearer if it were to be kept in the same category to add that, what it is we're doing out there into that characteristics description.
Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little torn on this, because I do believe that language is important. I do think, you know, manufacturing does, you know, just the word manufacturing sends the wrong idea. I think the description is pretty clear on what it is. I think that's what's, what is really important here. But then I also agree with Mr. Mays' idea that, you know, putting it in open lands isn't really, it, that I think sends an even worse message that this is, you know, that this has something to do with public use also, and obviously, it really doesn't. So I, I think it makes sense. I mean, I've never really heard of manufacturing energy as much as producing energy, but you know, I, I see it both ways here on this one, because I do think language is important. But I certainly think that it probably belongs here more so than it certainly does in open lands.
And Mayor McManus, if I could just reinforce that, to help reassure the council, because we have a subarea chapter that talks specifically about the El Dorado Valley, and is very clear about the uses that are permitted, I think that helps in conjunction with the proposed changes to reassure what is permitted and what's not permitted within El Dorado Valley.
Well, I, I also have a significant concern. You know, there, there's been talk over the years about what is allowed out there. I think some of that was, the meaning of what was already there was twisted around to permit uses that I don't believe are allowed out there. So I have a real concern when we bring this term manufacturing in. You know, would that include someone building a plant to produce solar panels, for instance, out there? Would it be a plant where maybe they're manufacturing copper cable? Things like that that are also part of the energy production. And I do think Councilman Adams has the right word there. We don't really manufacture it. It's been called the energy transfer zone, energy production, but not manufacturing. And I think that's a very troubling term for me to introduce a concept like that for that area out there. I think we do already have definition, as you just mentioned, but it doesn't talk about manufacturing, and that's actually a use that had always been understood was not going to be allowed out there. So words matter. I think that's a significant issue on the proposed changes. So I, I would have real trouble with that. Regarding the other change for the 5,000 or R5 designation, I do understand that many of the lots in the original part of Boulder City are in that size range. I happen to be the proud owner of a 5,500 square foot lot, so I understand that. My concern is, are we setting up a classification here where a new development can come in and utilize that same 5,000 square foot designation for building new homes, rather than what we prefer to see, which are the established, now established, 7,000 square foot lots? So I don't know that we need that designation when we already have an existing designation for the lots that were part of the original, or at least the very early part of our city. So I also have concerns about making that particular change, and then we see some type of housing being introduced into the original part of town that may not be what we had in mind. So once again, words do matter. It matters in the future how those things might be applied, and I have substantial concerns about how that particular item is worded as well. Any other questions or comments?
Well, then I would suggest, because with this item, and I think the city attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, it needs the four votes as an amendment to the master plan. If there is not consensus regarding the proposed changes, then I would suggest that we take it back to the planning commission for those clarifications.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Mr. Sineken?
I only came to talk about the open meeting law assertions, but since I'm here, I agree with you. I wouldn't want to see 5,000 foot lots built into the master plan, because it would open the door to other developers. I don't want to turn this into Las Vegas. People have used variances already with storybook and cottages to increase density that go against what Boulder City stands for and for reasonable housing under our existing code, and I wouldn't want to see that door opened up. As far as putting the word manufacturing into the El Dorado Valley, that's opening Pandora's box. Under the Woodbury administration, they already snuck in 50 acres of manufacturing illegally into the El Dorado Valley. Mr. Olson approved something that was very nefarious that I won't go into, but that area, in the transfer area, is for recreation, solar, and tortoise preserve. 85,000 acres of tortoise, there was 4,000 solar, 20,000 recreation. They snuck in 50 acres, and I would like to see that repealed, that didn't belong there. There was a very fine point that Mr. Olson told me that he was put up to say, and that's how that got in. So I agree on the 5,000 not being in the master plan, and I would like to see the 50 acres that was put in against the transfer agreement for the El Dorado Transfer Area studied, and Mr. Mays is well aware of it, I've had this discussion with him, because I looked at doing an initiative to put that before the public and get a vote to have that retracted. So I applaud your suggestions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Mr. DiTeresa, are you leaving, or are you coming up?
I'm moving.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment then. Any other questions or comments from counsel? Councilman Adams?
Just out of curiosity for formality, if we don't go ahead as far as making these changes tonight with the master plan, would that preclude us from voting on Section C, which is the?
I believe that's Resolution 7026.
That is correct. No, it wouldn't preclude you from voting on that.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. As far as the, the R15 lots, I guess personally, I'm not so afraid of having the potential for a zoned area that could potentially have 5,000 square, square foot lots. I mean, I think a variety of, of homes is something that the master plan talks about. Obviously, in here, it was R17 with the 7,000 square foot. But I, you know, so many of the homes, some of the best homes, I feel, most unique homes, and the ones that I would personally probably like to move into one day, are on these 5,000 roughly square foot lots. So, you know, I don't see them as being completely detrimental to the community potentially down the road now. Do we want everything in the future to be that? Of course not. But I guess I'm just, I'm just voicing that I'm not entirely opposed to the idea that we do allow for some, you know, variability within our, our designs.
Anyone else? So I suppose the best thing to do then will be to take these one at a time. Resolution 7025, let me make sure that I get that correct here. That was the resolution for the master plan change to the engineer, energy manufacturing. Is that correct?
References to amendments to Chapter 4, which is inclusive of that as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion then for approval of Resolution 7025?
I'd like to, can I discuss just a little bit more?
Sure.
Just so, kind of where I'm at, I think I, I am in agreeance. It's not really something that I had considered before regarding the specific word of manufacturing, but I, I do share that concern. So I'm, would not be opposed to potentially trying to find better language that, you know, perhaps production would be better. So that's, I'm fine with that. I'm not really sold either way on the 5,000 or 7,000. Like I said, I, I would prefer it, but I just want to put that out there as anybody's looking to make a motion.
Is anyone willing to make a motion? I guess that fails then for lack of emotion. We then have Resolution 7026, and that is the one for the designating the land from open lands to open lands conservation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval on that?
I move to approve Resolution Number 7026.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is four votes then. Okay, we'll move to item number 10, Resolution 7027.
Still me. So with, similar to the prior agenda items, you have two actions in a public hearing to consider with item number 10. With item number 10, we are talking about land specifically located to the west of Highway 95. This is referenced as Townsite Southwest. And in particular, these two action items are related to the lease option for Skyler Solar CEI LLC. This land is 143 acres. Resolution 7027 would amend the master plan to change the land use designation from open lands to manufacturing energy, which again, is a reference on the map, and so that's why it's considered with this change. But without the amendments to the master plan, we don't have the definition. So we can go back to the planning commission to clarify that, but we have other parcels that are already designated manufacturing energy on our master plan. So as you can see here, that's what it would do to be consistent with the rest of the lease area on the east side of Highway 95. Bill Number 16, or excuse me, Bill Number 1863 would rezone the same property from government open space to energy resource zoning, as you can see on the screen, so that it too is consistent with the rest of the lease area for Skyler Solar CEI LLC. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
Just, just to make sure and clarify, there's, there's not any issue, because we didn't pass the last one, even though it says MAN E on there, there's no issue with actually moving forward with this, just even though the definition isn't, I guess, it is, it is defined certainly, it's somewhere. I'm just making sure that there's no, there's not going to be any conflict, because the previous resolution wasn't moved forward.
Correct. You could proceed with this, and then we would work with the planning commission to look at clarification of that language and bring it back to the city council.
Question I have is, we have land on the east side that has the designation already is what?
With respect to the zoning, it is already energy resource. With respect to the master plan, it is designated as MAN E, manufacturing energy.
Okay, and then to the east, it is designated?
Sorry, I thought you said to the east.
Oh, excuse me, to the west.
To the west, it is currently in the master plan open lands, and with our current zoning, government open space.
And the proposal is to change the zoning to this energy manufacturing?
Energy resource, which is consistent with our other solar projects within the community.
Okay, so we would then be placing that same designation on, that the other, the eastern side already has, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. What I'm getting at is, I don't want to get in a position of approving something for a designation that we didn't approve within the master plan.
Are you referring then to the manufacturing energy?
Correct.
Because it's what's already used within the master plan, it just didn't have the definition that we had proposed, which was a point of clarification.
All right, well, that's still concerning for me, that we may need to look at that designation itself, and at some other time, and determine whether we want to make changes on that or not. But for this then, we would simply be placing the same designation on the east side, excuse me, the west side property, as is currently on the east side of US 95.
That is correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, this also is a public hearing, so is there anyone wishing to speak on this issue? Mr. Todd?
Greg Todd, Boulder City resident, good evening, everyone. I agree with Mr. Michael Mays, and this is the reason I'm going to make the statement. We are manufacturing electricity out there, because we're taking DC solar panels and converting that energy to AC. As soon as you convert it, you're manufacturing it. The problem you got is you've got a peaker unit down there, which supports all the solar panels, it also generates electricity, because it is coming off as alternating current AC. So you have a manufacturing zone, which is solar panels, you have a generation zone, which is your peaker unit or your gas-fired solar plant. When you go to put your other gas-fired solar plant in, back along the spine of those mountains, what are you going to call that? Are you going to take a manufacturing energy, or are you going to call it generation? Natural gas is not green energy. It produces an oxide. So the problem is, we're now taking and trying to rezone the whole valley to custom-fit everything that's being built out there. And we have to understand, when we convert energy from DC to AC, we are manufacturing a product. We are mimicking the phase angle of what we're positioning into the line and the voltage. the phase angle of what we're positioning into the line and the voltage. We're manufacturing that off a solar panel. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing no others, we'll go ahead and close public comment then, and bring it back to council for questions or comments. All right. Anyone wishing to make a motion then for approval of Resolution 7027?
I'll move to approve of Resolution Number 7027.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous, and then we'll move...
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear that that was also with the findings, that the amendment will conserve and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. And then for the bill, that's a finding as well.
Yes, that would be with the findings. Sorry.
Okay, and then on Bill 1863?
I move, I make a motion to accept Bill Number 1863.
With?
With findings. I don't have to repeat them. If you do, I will.
The findings for Bill 1863 is that the amendment is in conformance with the proposed amendment to the adopted master plan for the city and promotes the health, safety, morals, or the general welfare of the city.
What you said, yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous then as well. You haven't sat down yet, have you? Okay, item number 11, Resolution 7028, opposition to the size of the Pro Gun Club sign.
Thank you, Mayor. Pro Gun Club sign is, the Pro Gun Club sign that's being proposed is located at 12-801 South Highway 95 in unincorporated Clark County. They have sought a waiver of the development standards of the county to erect a wall sign on an existing water tank, as you can see on the screen, with an extended CMU wall. The total area of the sign is approximately 1,600 square feet. The sign is measured by the county as the height of the letters, which is 12 feet high, by the length, which is about 1,100 square feet. On October 1st, 2019, the Clark County Planning Commission granted a waiver of the proposed sign to allow it to proceed. The city, in response, appealed the Planning Commission's decision, and the Board of County Commissioners will hear the matter on November 6. In staff's letter to the county, the basis for the objection included that the approved sign is not in harmony with promoting rural residential development as identified with the property's RU zoning, and that the sign does not comply with the urban-specific policy 20 of the Clark County Conference of Plan, which basically talks about being in harmony with surrounding uses. City Council approval of Resolution 7028, that's before you tonight, would formally oppose the waiver of development standards and the sign approved by the Clark County Planning Commission. The approved resolution would then be shared with the Clark County Board of Commissioners. Staff is currently in discussions with the applicant about potentially reducing the size of the sign, but for the interest of City Council consideration, this would be a resolution in opposition to the sign that was approved by the Planning Commission. And I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Folda?
So, if this is opposed by the city, what would the next courses be? It's going before the County Commission for a hearing, is that correct?
Correct. We just forward this resolution to the County Commission.
Okay, so is, is there any, I guess, legal retribution that could come back to Boulder City, just because I know in their previous case, they went to probably the Supreme Court for their other sign. So I'm not sure if the attorney has the answer.
What possible action? Is the question what possible action the business owner would have against Boulder City?
Yeah, any legal action for this, for us opposing this sign?
None.
Ultimately, this is the decision of the Clark County Board of Commissioners.
It is. And is council, you can sue someone for anything. It doesn't mean those claims are valid, right? And so I can't imagine a viable claim that would come against the city for opposing this.
Thank you.
I would just make the comment, I had attended the Planning Commission meeting along with Mr. Mays on this. You know, this business in the past, as Councilwoman Folda just mentioned, had placed a sign, lettering, on a hillside, had taken up an entire hillside with a sign that was also found to be in violation of the county building code, and appealed that all the way to the state Supreme Court. Even after the Supreme Court had denied the ability of the sign to remain, they still did not take the sign down for months and months. That's not the sign of somebody who wants to be terribly cooperative in abiding by what the codes are. In this particular case, the county staff had recommended against allowing the sign that they were proposing, and the County Planning Commission overrode that recommendation to approve the sign. I was very concerned at some of the comments that some of the county planning commissioners made, especially with regard to Boulder City. It's one thing to override staff decisions and go ahead and give a variance on something, but I think it's another thing to insult an entire community, which two of the commissioners, in my opinion, did, I think in a very uncalled-for manner. That's why I think it's important for us to express to the Clark County Commission that we do not want a sign out there that exceeds what the current zoning allows for in that area. I know that we've been asked to meet with them. Mr. Mays did make an offer to meet with the owner. I also informed Mr. Mays that I would be willing to meet with them to discuss this. My understanding is the owner never responded to Mr. Mays's request, although a meeting was later scheduled by County Commissioner Gibson and staff to talk about some other possibilities. I think it's important, too, to realize that I believe the current zoning allows for 500 square feet, is that correct, Mr. Mays?
Actually, the current zoning allows for 50 square feet because of the location of the sign and its rural residential designation.
Okay, and he is next to, or the property actually straddles, two different zones, is that correct?
That is correct. So the northern portion of the property is zoned at RU. The southern portion of the property is zoned M2, manufacturing, and it would allow for a larger area signage, wall signage.
Okay, so there was the possibility they could move the sign then to that other zoning, or they could apply for a zoning change, and that would allow them then up to the 500 square feet. But their proposal is for 5,000 square feet of signage, is that correct?
No, with the most recent proposal that was approved by the Planning Commission of Clark County, the area of the signage is how you define it. So when we're looking at the total wall area, as outlined in their staff report, it's around 3,500 square feet. However, Clark County's code says the total signage is the height of the letters times the length. And so what was approved by the Clark County Planning Commission was 1,100 square feet total.
All right. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, well, I'll make the motion on this then to approve Resolution 7028 then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we will then move to item number 12. Is that Mr. Mays again? Yes, I believe it is.
It is, but I promise it's the last one for tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
So, each year at this time, we come before the City Council to discuss the land management process. The land management process is an opportunity for the City Council and the public to evaluate the addition of city-owned properties to a list, the land management process list, for potential consideration for either the sale or lease. I like to emphasize each year that this is a very initial step in a process for consideration of the lease or sale. It does not factor in other steps and entitlements that may be required, but it's an initial opportunity for the community in a transparent process to be able to see what is being proposed for city land and adding it to this list. Each year, we provide notice in local newspapers and in Las Vegas area, asking for responses, inquiries about adding parcels to the list. This year, in response to those newspaper inquiries, there was no submissions. In addition, with the recent amendments that the City Council made to the land management process, we now have a new mechanism so that if a parcel has been on the list for three years, it comes back before the City Council for reconsideration. And just for the public's benefit, as you can see on the screen, the parcels in red are the current parcels on the list. There are two maps. This is the Townsite map, and then we have the second El Dorado Valley map, which has one parcel, which is the Black Hills South solar area. So with respect to reconsideration of existing parcels, because all the parcels that are currently on the list were added in 2017 or before, they are all up for reconsideration by the City Council. To help the City Council evaluate these parcels, what staff has done is, on this spreadsheet and what is also within your packet, is the list of the existing parcels, and highlighted in blue are the ones that staff recommend to retain on the list. The reasons for this is that these are parcels that there has been active interest for consideration for sale or lease, and as noted under the notes section, a couple of additional parcels that tie into the city's strategic plan, and so thus, staff has recommended that those be retained. The parcels in white, there has been no interest for these parcels, and so staff would recommend their removal. The total acreage of the staff-recommended parcels to retain is 1,279 acres. And you also see with the sheet that was contained in your packet and on the screen, it also, for your reference, shows the proposed use as designated through the land management process list, the current master plan, and the zoning and acres for each of those parcels. In addition, and what we're seeking direction from the City Council tonight on, is staff's recommendation to add a new parcel to the land management list. This is referred to as Black Hills North solar area. It is 1,275 acres. With the recent RFP, with the Black Hills South parcel, which is directly to the south of Black Hills North, there is strong interest by solar and other energy companies for Black Hills South, and because of that demand, staff believes that it would be appropriate to add this parcel to the list. The next step in the process would be council recommendation to forward this on to the Planning Commission for consideration of its addition to the land management process list. And then with that recommendation, this would all come back to the City Council in January, February, not only for the consideration of adding this parcel to the list, but your evaluation of the existing parcels and whether to keep them on the list, and then that would be approved by resolution. With that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I guess then we need to have direction given for forwarding this to the Planning Commission with a recommendation either for or opposed?
Well, yeah, the recommendation of whether to advance this on to the Planning Commission for consideration of Black Hills North.
I would move to move this to the Planning Commission. I want to get the words right. For, okay, consideration of the proposed changes. Is that sufficient?
Specifically for Black Hills North.
Yeah, that's also for the land management process list, correct, for the removal of the...
No, with the code, it does not require for the City Council to forward the potential removal of parcels to the list, only the addition of parcels to the list.
So I would, I would move to, continue to move this to the Planning Commission with the addition of the Black Hills North.
For their consideration.
For their consideration.
Is that sufficient?
Just for clarification, I understand that you want to move the Black Hills North proposal to the Planning Commission, but what about accepting staff's recommendations for removals of the list?
No, that won't be considered until January, February.
Oh, January, I'm sorry.
That's what I had asked, whether or not the white items, the items under consideration for removal needed to be determined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a second then?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous then. And that will bring us then to item number 13, consideration or a review of the decision made at the October 8th council meeting?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council, Steve Morris, your city attorney. The Nevada Legislature, understanding the need for the possibility for corrective action and understanding that we're human and may not catch all possible or alleged violations of the open meeting law in real time, provided an opportunity under NRS 241.0365 to take corrective action for alleged violations of the open meeting law without any admission of wrongdoing. Item number 13 is a proposed corrective action for an alleged open meeting law violation that is alleged to have occurred during our council meeting on October 8, 2019, with respect to the deliberation and action taken by council with respect to regular agenda item number 13. Specifically, the request that council review of a draft request for proposals and possible staff directive regarding land sale, track 350 around the Boulder Creek Golf Course. The allegation is that the action of council to deliberate and remove the design, the intended street design for Bristol Cone and Clubhouse Drive, remove the median, that that strayed from the agenda item, and that the public wasn't given proper notice of the potential for the council to deliberate and take action on a design standard. And so what we have, what we have before you, council, is an opportunity to take corrective action once again without any admission of any wrong... once again without any admission of any wrongdoing, to give an opportunity to provide that notice. My recommendation is if the council wants to move forward with the removal of the median, that item number 14 be tabled, and that direction be given to staff to bring back another agenda item to deliberate and potentially take action on the design standards for those specific roadways. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before questions or comments from council, I just want to make the public aware, I have provided a open meeting law opinion from the Attorney General's office to members of council and staff, and there are copies here on the front table if anybody would want to look at that. I believe they're the ones that are on the left-hand side of the corner of the table there. So if anybody would like to take a look at those, I will probably refer to some points of that later on in this discussion. Any questions or comments from council members?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I was concerned that on the original agenda, it does not say alleged open meeting law, it says correction, corrective action for open meeting law violation. And then I see that that was corrected on here. In my opinion, and not looking at any wrongdoing, I did become informed from residents that there is interest and concern in whether or not there's a narrow road, the current road, or whether there's a widened road with a median strip. I remembered our last meeting, Judge Miller was the one who got up and suggested that it was something that had been introduced early in the design process. And like I said, people read the article, people commented, and I personally would be interested to look again at the sale and...
Excuse me, but I think right now, what we're talking about specifically is the allegation of an open meeting law violation. We have an item following this regarding the RFP, so I think we need to keep the conversation concentrated on the alleged open meeting law violation.
Correct, Mayor. And so the deliberation obviously can surround the deliberations that were taken by council on the October 8th meeting. If it's the council's desire to move forward without any changes to the design standards, then the council also has the ability to do that.
Well, again, I think right now, though, what we're discussing is the open meeting law violation or the allegations of that, and not the specifics of the RFP for this land sale.
And that's fine, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments then regarding the open meeting law violation that's alleged to have occurred?
I have one comment that I'd like to just read. When talking about the RFP as a whole and deciding on whether, what they're going to be bidding on, council reviewed not only the RFP itself, but the attachments and staff notes made during the October 8th meeting. The agenda topic statement included the RFP as a whole, which includes the minimum development standards. The minimum development standard requirements were not only referred to specifically in the memo from staff, but mentioned at least six times in the RFP draft language. It is unreasonable that city council will discuss and possibly make recommendations on the minimum development standards stated in the body of the RFP and its attached end While in the future, we can maybe discuss those. Further on as development goes, this is not the question at hand. As the RFP and its statements were being considered on how to be drafted for bid, to require staff to craft an agenda statement that would cover every single detail of the RFP in a way that would cover every deliberation associated with the details within the drafted RFP is unreasonable, and I think well beyond the clear and complete standard requirement. In my opinion, that council discussed what was on the agenda and made actions so that it was clear for the RFP going out to bid.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Adams?
No, I guess I'll just voice my overall frustration with this because I felt that during both briefings and in the meeting itself, it felt as though everything that we were doing was on the up and up, and perhaps it is, it's just an alleged violation, obviously. But you know, that's, for me, that can become a little troubling in that, you know, where did the ball get dropped, if there really was? You know, we depend on staff to be vigilant, obviously, in order to make decisions, in order to, you know, stay within the lines. You know, that being said, I'm, you know, just to clarify this, if we were to take action to avoid the last meetings discussion and were to move forward with it, there's no admission of a violation, correct?
That is correct.
So for me personally, you know, I feel, you know, we're already here because this has spurred so much comment. You know, my reticence, reticence in the previous council meeting was that I had heard nothing from any of the public regarding this item, and I certainly have heard a lot more now, obviously. So for me, that at least gives me a little bit more, I'm more comfortable, you know, moving forward with this, you know, going ahead, voiding it, and having the conversation again for the, at this time. That's where my comfort level is at this moment.
Yeah, if I'm, okay, going to specifically address this. My feeling was that somewhere along the line, it was considered, someone thought that we want to stray. And whether I'm not admitting whether I want to stray or not, I think if we have an opportunity to continue the discussion of Lot 350 in a way that is clear and concise and completely addresses all issues, then I'm comfortable with going forward to that. Not admitting any guilt or innocence or alleges or whatever, just a matter of moving forward on this issue.
Thank you. I do have some concerns about this. One is, of course, the way this was agendized indicates that this was an actual violation. That agenda is what stands out for the public to look at, and that's what's stated on there, even though in the packet itself, it does refer to this being an allegation rather than an actual violation. I think that's a significant issue, because as people, as years go by and somebody pulls this agenda, they're going to see that item and not have that perspective. So that's a significant issue, and that's how violations come about, is when we're not precise with the wording. So I don't think that's a minor issue, I think that's a significant issue. With regard to the violation that's alleged to have occurred itself, we've not seen anything. All we've, all I've received anyway is a verbal indication that an allegation was made, and then an email that said that an allegation had been made. So I don't know what the concerns specifically were addressed by any member of the community, multiple members of the community, and I think that's also significant when we're looking at these types of things. A concern I think we have is, instead of just looking at this as, well, it's just a do-over. When we make decisions up here on council, I think that all of us try and do that in a very deliberative manner. And when we do have these allegations made, we need to take them seriously, but we also can't allow people to make allegations that we have somehow violated the law in order to negate decisions that we've already arrived at. So I think that's something we have to keep in mind whenever we look at these, and not just to say, oh, well, we'll just rescind it and do it over again. These are important issues, and if there are errors that are being made by city council, we need to make note of that, make corrections of that. All of these laws apply to this body, not to staff, not to anyone else. The obligation refers to the body itself, which in this case is the city council. So I think we need to take that very seriously when these allegations are made, and not just believe, well, it's a do-over, we'll take another look at it. As far as the allegation itself, it's been stated to me, and as I say, I've not seen anything from any member of the public as to what was actually alleged in this case, but what I've been told is that what occurred was we had not agendized the amendments to standards for streets and roadways. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
The allegation is that the council strayed from the clear and complete agenda title to a discussion of the design standards that were required in the RFP. And so you have another level, right, of the onion that you peel back when you start talking about the design standards that shall be included. And so, and again, that can happen, right? That's why we have this body of law, is to be able to take corrective action and minimize the impact that may occur from an actual finding by the Attorney General of an open meeting law violation, which would void the action.
Okay, so again, the allegation is that we moved into a discussion of amending standards that apply to roadways. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I do not recall anyone ever saying that we were going to do an examination of standards as they applied to roadways. What I do recall, and I know I made the statement, that the length of this road and the placement of this, the number of possible entries and exits off of this roadway, did not lend itself to being the type of roadway that would have a median. So I wasn't questioning the standards that we have for construction of these roadways. I was questioning whether we had the right standard roadway in place within the development. I don't recall any other council member saying, no, we're going to look at whatever that standard is that's been applied and amend that. I think that what was being discussed was whether we felt the type of road that had been included in the RFP was appropriate for this subdivision or this particular area, but not to say that, well, we're going to change our standards here and have some other standard. I don't know if the official wording is that this is an arterial versus a neighborhood street, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I do know that we do have standards for the amount of traffic and usage the road is expected to have, but I don't think any of us were trying to amend that. And I don't think that was where the discussion went, I don't recall anyone saying anything about that. So I think that's a problem too, where it's like, well, we don't want you to take that road away. Not that we were questioning the standards that are involved, but just the fact that we don't want you to take that type of road away. Not that we couldn't use a different standard that already exists, but that they just did not want that removed. So again, I think that's where we get into the situation of, are we having our decisions negated because somebody didn't like the decision, or because we actually strayed from what the agenda item was?
Well, and to answer that, Mr. Mayor, page 399 of the packet material states, "Bristle Cone shall be developed to an 80-foot-wide cross-section with a landscape median." And so the action of council was to remove that median. And so I don't think anyone's debating the council's ability to deliberate and take action on design standards, but that wasn't within the scope of the agenda item. And so what we're talking about here is, we are error on the side of complete transparency and openness. And if there is a situation where there's an allegation, and it could be verbal, it could, you know, it could be by smoke signals for that matter, that the city did not provide reasonable notice and an opportunity to be heard on a matter, it is incumbent upon the city to take corrective action and provide that notice. And so when we talk about those standards, again, no one's debating the council's ability to do so, they're debating the notice. Were they given sufficient notice to weigh in? And from what I've heard is, council has been given notice that, hey, that's important to me, and I didn't have an opportunity to speak about that. My obligation as the city attorney is to keep the council from those findings of the Attorney General of an open meeting law violation. How do we do that? We do that by taking corrective action. That's what is being proposed today.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify that this particular agenda item was prepared by staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then it goes through some type of review process as to whether it's clear and complete?
Again, yes, we do look at those titles, but that doesn't guarantee that the council won't stray from that clear and complete standard.
I understand that. I'm just getting to the fact that this does go through a review process so that staff is aware of what the intended discussion is supposed to be about. And I'll be quite honest with you, I don't see where it says much about anything other than we were to review the RFP and for the land surrounding the Boulder Creek Golf Course. So I don't see where there was a prohibition or a request for recommendations to council, and yet staff told us that during the meeting, during the discussion, that if we wish to make changes to this, we should make a motion, which I believe it was Councilwoman Folda had constructed the motion, to make any changes we wish to make.
In hindsight, Mr. Mayor, I'd agree, there's a lot of things that we could have changed and should have done, and I can promise you that these are the types of experiences that we learn from, and we take remedial action to change that.
Okay. I would just like to read a portion of this open meeting law opinion from the Attorney General's office, or actually, it's a finding of no violation, and it's their file number And on the last page of that, the wording is, "The complaint further asserts that Agenda Item Number G3 was not clear and complete, and that it did not specify the impact of the approval of the franchise agreement would have been upon the residents of Incline Village." And this is a quote, "A higher degree of specificity is needed when the subject to be debated is of special or significant interest to the public." That's from a Supreme Court decision, Sandoval versus Board of Regents, I believe. However, Agenda Item Number 3G complied with the statutory mandate to provide the public clear notice that the board would deliberate and potentially take action upon the approval of the franchise agreement. NRS 241, which is the open meeting law, does not require that the agenda item includes speculation as to the full impact that such a decision might have, nor would such a requirement be reasonable. A statute should be construed in light of the policy and the spirit of the law, and the interpretation should avoid absurd results." They cite Hunt versus Warren as a case there, and then the last sentence, "Moreover, the extensive supporting material, Agenda Item Number G3 provided transparency on the potential impact of the action taken." So I just want to read that into the record so that there is an understanding that it's not necessary for us to agendize every possible detail ahead of time that might be discussed. What our obligation is, is that we try and inform the public of what our discussion is going to be about, and in this case, it said that we were being asked to review the draft RFP to sell the track 350 land surrounding the Boulder Creek Golf Course. Again, I think that should be sufficient to alert the public that that is going to be discussed, and certainly, all of the material that was included in that, including the RFP itself, gave indication, gave clear indication, I believe, to the public that we were going to look at all of the items being included in that RFP. With all that said... With all that said, you know, we're, again, in a situation of pulling back a decision here. There is no admission of guilt. I am a little bit concerned of, of saying that, well, if a citizen doesn't like what we did, they can always come up and say we violated the open meeting law and toss that out. We do have agendas, they are posted out there for the public. We have open meetings here, people are able to come and make comments. So I, I just have a concern about that. But with that, I'll entertain a motion unless someone else has any questions or comments. Councilman Adams?
I was just going to say that I, I agree that you don't, we don't want to set a precedence that, oh, anything that somebody doesn't like, they can just allege something, and then, you know, suddenly that's just the way it works. But I, I don't think that's, that's the case here. Obviously, the city attorney has an opinion that there is potential that there was a violation. Now, whether I agree with that opinion, or any of us agrees with that opinion, is one thing, but that is the opinion that the city attorney gave us. So I just don't see, you know, that's what would hopefully prevent those frivolous things, is having a city attorney up there that can make those decisions about whether or not we are, there is that potential. And in this case, I think, you know, this is, this is the appropriate action for us to take, given that this is our, Steve Morris is our city attorney, and this is the opinion that he has given. So that's where I'm at right now.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to add another comment about the history of this land sale. So back in 2016, council was, the same thing was brought forth to them, very similar language in the minutes were proposed, and their conversation was almost exact to what ours was. I think that this might have come up because of the different council that's before you now, more than whether or not it was a violation of a meeting law, open meeting law. I feel like this is more of an attack on not getting something that was favorable to a certain area in town. This, I think it would be irresponsible of council not to discuss all the details of the RFP. And so to say that we're not allowed to, or that we're constrained from doing so, I think that would is against, you know, providing a good RFP for, for the land that we're putting So I, I do feel like that, that there is a push and pull going on here, and that we did stay within that discussion of the land sale around Boulder Creek Golf Course. That does, that they did give enough notice to the neighborhood that that would be discussed. This isn't an item that a miller needs to go out, so there's that expectation, I heard in an open public comment, that they should have received a miller for this. That's not something, this land has been on the, has been voted on, I think, 10 years ago now. So there has been that expectation that it would eventually be developed. I think that, you know, the neighborhood is well aware of that there was discussion about what would happen, that there would be changes happening in that area. And certainly, there are current changes going on with Storybook Homes being developed there. So I feel like this has given notice to the public that there will be changes in that area.
Mayor, may I please say something?
Yes.
So I, I don't know if this will help, but I, the reason we are taking these measures is because, well, first of all, we all work for the city. So it's very disappointing to hear that you would think that we would, somebody didn't get their way, we proceed with caution. The street design standards is a supporting document to the RFP, it is not the RFP itself. Those street standards were adopted as an alone agenda item. I think, was it 2016, Keegan? They, it would be like adoption of a five-year plan for RTC and their projects. It is a separate action. And so, yes, we did not catch it when the motion was made. However, and we apologize for that, but this was also not brought up prior to, at the meeting, so we can't, although we do review the packet, we do review agenda items, we talk about them in staff meetings, to catch every single detail in every staff report is impossible. We want to do what's right for the council, we are here to support you, and we want to do what's right for the community. Based on the agenda title, that it's a RFP, of course, the people off of Bristlecone know that that land's for sale, it's voter-approved land, they've known that for many, many years. What they didn't know is that a document that is a supporting document to the RFP would be amended. That, there was, that's, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was off the agenda title, so I hope that provides a little clarification. But if nothing else, we are here, we are on the same team, we're here to support you.
Councilwoman Bridges?
So something that I believe was discussed earlier in my briefing was that a, an option for item number 14 would be to table that in order to agendize an opportunity to discuss not only the sale of 350, but an amendment to the standard, the street standard.
Again, I think we're straying away from the item that we're currently on. I think that's more appropriate for our next item on the agenda. I, I just wanted to make one comment, and that was something that Councilman Adams had said, that, well, if the city attorney offers us an opinion, then we should go with that. I certainly think that that's oftentimes the thing that we would want to do. But again, I do want to clarify that each of us is up here to arrive at our own decisions. We are not to be dictated to by anyone on city staff. We are here to take in the information that's presented to us and come to a decision based on our own deliberations and what we see as the facts. The other thing that I wanted to point out is, we are each free to go and seek research in any place we please before we come to these meetings. We can talk to other attorneys, we can read other opinions from the Attorney General, we can read the law, we can read research on this, we can do all of those things that help feed our information, our deliberation on what we come to. So I just want to perhaps disagree somewhat with Councilman Adams that, well, the city attorney told us that. I put a lot of time into looking into this and deliberating on what this was all about. So I just want to make clear that we're not obligated to follow something if we don't feel it's appropriate. So again, any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on this, then?
I make a motion to take corrective action for the alleged open meeting law violation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we will move on to item number 14, which is a deja vu all over again from the RFP that we previously had looked at. Do we have a presentation? No one's volunteering. Still no one's, I see people pointing at each other, but...
Nothing's changed since the last meeting. That's why I didn't have a presentation. The, what you have in your packet, that does include a requirement that they interned to a development agreement, that was clarified, but otherwise, the document's the same as what you saw at the last meeting.
Questions or comments from council members?
I wanted to clarify, there was one change, wasn't there, with regards to references to track 349, word changed in this.
Right, the script was zero, it was taken care of, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Adams?
I guess I'm just curious if where our general head is at right now, if we're wanting to move forward with this as is, or if we want to table it, because I feel that's pretty much kind of where, where we're at right now. So that's what I'm curious to see, where everyone else is at.
Any other questions or comments?
Where I understood that tabling it, if there was a decision to change those design standards, I know my, I've, I've given it a lot of thought, I've given this all a lot, I don't think I've slept for the last two days, because I do put a lot of thought. We all are putting a lot of thought and energy into these issues. But that, the decision to go ahead with the sale would, would be assuming the acceptance of the entire RFP and all of the minimum design standards, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Folda?
So I've, there are elements of this RFP that I, I think need to be discussed. There's a lot more to this development than just vacant lot. There's other, lots of requirements that are required of someone who would bid on this property. And I think that we need to redraft and revise this so that we can have a more comprehensive agenda item, where we can actually discuss that. Also, I feel like we need additional information on, in the packet itself, to make decisions on the RFP. There's a drop in about $6 million from the previous assessment, or...
Appraisal.
Appraisal, thank you. Everyone knew it but me. The drop in the appraisal of $6 million, which is a lot. And, and there's reasons for that within the development requirements, and I think that needs to be agendized in a way that we can discuss it.
Thank you. I guess the cliche that came to my mind when I saw this come back in exactly the same form, and I don't know if that's a requirement, or, but, you know, there's the old cliche about what's the definition of insanity, and that's repeating the same action and expecting a different result from it. I think Councilman Adams has hit it on the head, I think Councilwoman Folda just elaborated on that. This needs serious consideration. So if someone would like to make a motion, then, and I believe the term is abeyance rather than tabling something. Not to give you a hint about the motion, but...
I would like to make an emotion for an abeyance, if that is the appropriate word. I think it, it sounds like there's enough concern about some of the details in the supporting documents and in the RFP, that it would be appropriate to have a discussion by the council, agendized as, to discuss the specifics. I know I had asked at, at last time whether we could just go ahead and talk about the specifics after, and it was no, because everybody who bids on this needs to be on a level playing field. So I think those specifics need to be discussed by council before we go ahead and, and put this out for RFP.
And the motion is?
An abeyance of this motion.
That's sufficient for you? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Just, sorry, just one quick, just one quick discussion. Is there a timeframe that we're looking at for, for this? Obviously...
Well, I'll, I'll make an amendment that I think that it should not return until council members have either had their input to city staff, or until, let's say, February of next year, at the latest.
Do I second that amendment?
No, actually, we need agreement from Councilwoman Bridges.
I second that amendment.
You'll accept the amendment?
I do, I accept the amendment.
And then I believe we need a second again.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, then. All right, we'll move on to item number 15, which is a request for potential cancellation of our second meeting in November. Anyone wishing to speak on that, or we just say it's around Thanksgiving and we don't want to be here?
Well, the council does have the authority to suspend its rules, because in its rules it does state that the council shall meet the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, with the exception of July and December. So it has the authority to suspend its rules to vacate a meeting, and this was brought up a couple of months ago because it is the holidays and the school will be out, and there are many people that like to take, go out of town for the holidays. So it's really up to you if you want to do that. There's nothing urgent that we can foresee coming up, that we can't work around that. So you can talk about it and discuss that at your pleasure.
And I just wanted to clarify that the charter does require that we meet once a month, and we are still planning to meet that requirement. And if something were to occur, we do have the opportunity to call a special meeting with proper notice. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. So I looked into this a little bit, because I wanted to see the history of when this has been done. And so there's been two meetings in, in November for the last 20 years that I went back. So I just can, you know, I just, I understand, you know, staff wants the day off. However, if City Hall is still open, that's my concern. And just, I want it to be known, I understand that school is out for that week this year, but for the next two years, it will not. And you will have school again on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That's my comment.
Councilman? Councilman Adams?
Yeah, I also just wanted to express some concern in that, you know, these last two packets have been, you know, 600-plus pages, 700 pages almost, and, you know, I certainly have the concern of, oh, there we go. I certainly have the concern of trying to hold two meetings in one. I don't feel that that's very, I don't think that benefits the community, I don't think it benefits us when we're trying to deliberate some things. That being said, I'm, I'm not against having some time off, maybe. Certainly, that would be, that would be appreciated, but, you know, I, I just have concerns with having the appropriate amount of time to make sure that we have to review items and not trying to, to squeeze everything. Like, I'm not opposed to vacating the meeting, but I do have some concerns that, you know, if, if the November 12th meeting is going to be 800, 900 pages, because, you know, we're trying to squeeze in everything so that we don't have to deal with it on, you know, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, that's, I'm, that's not something I would like to see happen.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. Wednesday before Thanksgiving is, I have a completely different perspective. Wednesday before Thanksgiving is the busiest travel day of the year. I love to see a full room. I, I think it puts people in a position of saying, well, maybe we're going to have to delay, because I think this issue is really important, this, that, you know, whatever it is. Of course, everything we deliberate and talk about up here is very important, but personally, I was going to call in, because I have a commitment. And I know people go away that week, and if kids are out of school. And it's not saying we're going to take every second Thursday, we wouldn't do that, but I think in this case, the day before the busiest travel day, in, in my opinion, is, is sufficient. And if there was a number of issues that came up between now and then, I, I was also under the understanding that we could call a special meeting. Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I make a motion, and I want to make sure I get the number correct. I make a motion to temporarily suspend section number 3.1 of the city council's rules of procedure to vacate November 26, 2019 meeting. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, okay, we're unanimous, then. We will then move to item number 16, the Claims Paid Report. We will then move to item number 16, the Claims Paid Report. Mr. Acting City Manager?
Items A and B are attached for your review. Other than that, there's business as usual and nothing unusual to report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on item 16? All right, we'll move to item number 17 then. Repeal of automatic utility increase, utility rate increases. Is there anyone from staff wishing to make comments or input or?
Mayor, I, I believe staff has been working very hard with regards to the issue regarding, regarding the bond debt service coverage. And with that, the Finance Director, I believe, has some additional information to share.
Well, I don't think we have to get into a long scenario about what's happened, but basically, there was some concern by the Finance Department with regards to meeting the debt service coverage ratio. And we were investigating some questions with Bond Council and received satisfactory answers on that matter late yesterday. So today, we were of the opinion that it was safe to, we could still meet the debt service coverage ratio even if we do not have the rate increases for this upcoming rate increase.
All right. So again, just, just to clarify, if we do repeal these rate increases, there would not have any impact on the covenants that are required for the debt refinancing that we introduced earlier this evening?
We will be able to meet the coverage based on the information that I now have. We can meet that coverage this year. And there's also the understanding that there is an ongoing rate study. So that also has helped the situation.
Thank you. You know, this was an item that I had brought forward. I had done that last year prior to the election. I know there were comments earlier tonight about some of this. I have closely followed the amount of revenues that come in, the reserves, what our capital improvement project list looks like, with the statement that this does not have or will not have an impact on the debt refinancing that is going to be considered. I believe that this is something that will benefit the residents. We're not going to take more money from them at this time. I guess any other questions or comments, although the outcome seems pretty straightforward to me.
I just want to say in agreement that, you know, there, there are some citizens that are very well off in town, and there's some that are very, very scrimping by. And that this is a very appreciated move that, you know, every dollar and cent counts to them. And to raise their rates anymore would really be a hardship. So I think that there's a lot of people in town that, that appreciate it, especially our senior community.
Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, I will go ahead and make a motion then for repeal of, as soon as I can find the numbers, the automatic 2.5% increase that was previously included in Resolution 6489, Section L, Resolution 6490, Section I, and Resolution 6491, Section E. Is that sufficient?
And let me verify with the city clerk, but I believe we would actually have to bring those resolutions back for that formal process to.
So you're looking for direction to staff at this time?
Correct.
All right, then I will move that we direct staff to formulate a resolution that will repeal those sections. Again, the resolutions are 6489, Section L, Resolution 6490, Section I, and Resolution 6491, Section E.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous then. All right, we will now move to item number 18. Again, this is an item that I had requested be placed on the agenda. I know earlier this evening that the city attorney had requested that this item be moved, removed from the agenda. I believe that the city attorney has a tremendous amount of conflict of interest on this, and that requesting that an agenda item be removed prior to having it heard by City Council or any statements being made is not something that is appropriate. If you wish to renew your objection to this, Mr. City Attorney, I'd be happy to hear it.
I do. I have an ongoing obligation, Mr. Mayor, to protect the council from possible open meeting law violations. I can't possibly determine whether or not a conflict has occurred without the specificity that's required by the open meeting law. And that is not found in Agenda Item Number 18. So I do renew my objection to item number 18.
Thank you. Again, I will discuss that as far as whether this is clear and complete. And I believe that was your objection previously, is that this item is not clear and complete. Is that correct?
That is correct. And matters of public concern have a heightened obligation for specificity. And as we have heard tonight from the public, and this has been found in my opinion, this item completely lacks specificity. Let's, let's just say there's many problems. And it hasn't been for lack of trying to get that specificity. Council always has the opportunity at any time to meet with myself, with members of staff, to help formulate agenda items that comply with the open meeting law. And is, while we have made those orators, no further specificity has been provided with respect to this agenda item. And so, again, it's, it's impossible to determine and prepare what the discussions are going to be. Now, with that being said, with.
Mr. City Attorney, again, I don't want to get into the back and forth on this yet. You have voiced that you feel there's, you have an objection to this based on the clear and complete issue that the Supreme Court has made clear in the past, in past decisions, that agenda items must be clear and complete.
That's correct. Not only is the open meeting law implicated in these agenda items, but our charter and state law.
Okay, thank you. In response to that, once again, I'll specify that this particular item may have an impact on the employment contracts of all municipal officers. That's what's stated in the request for this agenda item. You being one of the municipal officers, I believe you should have recused yourself from making any comments on this. I think you have a substantial conflict of interest by weighing in on an issue that has regards to your contract for employment. That's one of the reasons why I'm going forward with this and not taking your recommendation as far as removing the item. The other part of this is, the item is for possible action and direction to city staff, retention of a special counsel by the city council to review and advise on the following issues. That's the agenda item. Under that, or included in that item, are two issues that I wish to discuss, that I wish to have considered. Once again, I believe those are clear and complete. Discussions of the Nevada Open Meeting Law Standards and Requirements as far as review and advice from special counsel, employment contracts of municipal officers, including the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and municipal judge. Once again, I believe that is clear and complete, that that then allows us to enter into those discussions. Now, with regard to C, other issues is determined by a majority of city council, I can't know what the other members of city council would like to do. Okay? That's what the purpose of the open meeting law is, is that we do not deliberate prior to coming to these meetings. So the intent there is to allow other members of the city council to express any ideas that they may have with regard to the retention of a special counsel. So once again, I do not believe that this fails to meet the clear and complete. I believe it is very clear, and I believe it is very complete. However, I will withdraw discussion of C. That has been expressed to me by others, that maybe the wording of that might not have been the best. And what I would recommend then is other city council members, if they do have issues other than the two that I've specified, wish to discuss that, they should bring that forward at a future council meeting. So with that, I'm going to go forward with this. And I don't do this on my own. I want to also make that clear. I have spoken to the Attorney General's Office. Clearly, there was not enough time to get an official opinion from them. However, I was provided with three opinions from the Attorney General's Office. I reference those to Mr. Morris. I believe that those substantiate the fact that this is clear and complete, and that we are able to enter into discussions about this. Once again, as I had mentioned earlier tonight, although I appreciate what staff can do, we're not up here to be told what to do. We are here to make decisions based on the information that we have. So once again, I believe that that has been met. And with that, I'm going to go into the item for discussion. The first one there, A, the Nevada Open Meeting Law Standards and Requirements. My intent here isn't to have a big discussion about, well, this was done, or that was done, and this could have been done better. I feel that we need additional advice from an attorney regarding issues on the Nevada Open Meeting Law. I think there have been enough instances over my two years on this council where there has been conflicting and sometimes inconsistent information provided. That has sometimes led to, or at least on one occasion, to an open meeting law violation. I'm not trying to point fingers at anyone. I'm just saying that with the staff we currently have, I believe we have the ability and the need to have another attorney that we can ask questions from. I do not see this as being an open-ended thing. I do not see this person as being a replacement for our city attorney. The wording in the city charter, I believe, is clear that the city council can do this if it's in the interest of the city. So that's, that's one item. The second item is the employment contracts of municipal officers, including the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and municipal judge. For this meeting, I am the only member of this council that was involved with the hiring of the city attorney and the city manager. I voted against both of those contracts because I felt there were issues there that needed to be looked at. And in this case, I think it's important that the current city council members have someone with a legal background to be able to provide information to them, look at all of the factors that are included in those contracts, and be able to then formulate a decision as far as what they think should be done, if anything. It's maybe not necessary to do anything, but I do think it's important. And once again, it is an inherent conflict of interest for our current city attorney to provide information or opinions regarding his own contract. Other attorneys have made that very clear to me, that they believe that there is a conflict of interest to do otherwise on this, and to have our current city attorney making any comments about that. So I do want to make clear too, that the discussion tonight does not concern the process for employing a special counsel. If a majority of the council determines the need for a special counsel, an agenda item for that purpose may be requested for a future council meeting. This agenda item was requested prior to the meeting where the alleged violation of the open meeting law was to have occurred. I had put this request in before that meeting had even happened, so that's not part of this consideration. The discussion tonight does not include a discussion of the person that may be employed as a special counsel. Any such discussion would also need to be placed on the agenda of a future council meeting. I believe there are two clear needs that only a special counsel would be able to address, and therefore, the interests of the city require one be employed. I have included those two issues in the agenda request. And as I mentioned earlier, it's not possible for me to know what the other council members may be thinking. I've already said that I'm willing to forego discussion of that item to hear concerns from the other council members. But I do encourage them, if they have any input on that, that they request a future council agenda item for that as well. And once again, the city attorney has expressed his opinion that this agenda item does not meet the clear and complete requirement. The State Supreme Court has stated, excuse me, "I have researched the information on this issue and sought information from the office of the Attorney General regarding these concerns. Based on the information I have reviewed, I believe the item meets all the requirements of the open meeting law. I believe the city, city attorney has a significant conflict of interest present regarding this issue with his ability to present advice to council. The matter involves possible future actions that may involve his employment contract with the city." Sorry to be so wordy, folks, but obviously, this is a bit of a thorny issue. And with that, I'll open up for any questions or comments from council. Councilwoman Bridges?
Yes, sir. I did not vote to remove this from the agenda because I wanted to share my thoughts, okay? If that's okay. And what it is, is it may or may not be specific enough. It may or may not be complete enough, but it sure as heck made me very uncomfortable. I did not feel personally that there was any reason for me to support a special counsel for the city to study Nevada Open Meeting Law Standards and Requirements. I felt like I went through a sufficient program with PoolPAC. I've read all the documentation. I sure read a lot that supported the issues we talked about in items number 13 and 14. I've read the employment contracts for all four of the appointed staff. I was given copies of those when I was hired, or when I was elected and sworn in, and part of this great big packet that I got. And I did. And there were no specific items that I could find on here that were specific to a violation or a grievance. So this has got, you know, I get upset or, or passionate about certain issues, or people contact me. And this is not about people contact me, contacting me. But I personally have to feel a level of trust of the people that I'm working with. And so far, I have had no reason personally to feel anything but that level of trust and receive the information. I did go to the city attorney and asked him. I didn't even understand this. I wasn't quite clear what the problem was. And so, like I said, I, I could have, at the beginning, said yes to remove this from the agenda, but I personally had to give my opinion of, of this topic. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Councilwoman Folda?
In regards to retention of special counsel, I think that retention of special counsel is appropriate as the city attorney is unable to perform his duty in reviewing his own contract, because there's a legal conflict inherent in doing so. And as the appointed city officers are contractly, have obligations, and that those are the employees in which city council is over, I think it is behooves to the city that city council has a clear understanding of contracts and how they apply to the employees that they're at will, that are answer to the council. And that this is both clear to me what we were asking for, and appropriate in the way that our city attorney cannot review his own contract. And, you know, yes, we do have some open meeting law. And, you know, yes, we do have some open meeting law questions out there that are conflicting. And so, you know, I do support this in the interest of the city.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. I would just like to comment. I know Councilwoman Bridges has said that she's read the contracts and finds nothing in those. I do. I think one specific item that's in there is a clear violation of the city charter, and that is the prohibition in the charter for the city attorney to have a practice or do legal work outside of the city. That's a clear violation. I think that has an awful high level of possibility of leading to conflicts of interest, and I think that's a significant issue that needs to be addressed. Do you have a comment, Madam City Clerk? Okay, I just noticed there appears to be a discussion about it. Okay. Again, I think that those types of things require a person with a legal background to look at that information. I do understand that all of us have backgrounds that allow us to read information and comprehend it, but when we get into the issue of contracts, employment contracts, I think it's essential that we have someone with a legal background in that area to look at those contracts. Again, any other questions or comments? Okay, with that, I will make a motion, then, to go forward with directing city staff to determine the ability, or, excuse me, not the ability, let me get the exact wording here. I move that a special counsel be employed by the city to review and advise the city council on matters related to open meeting law issues and the employment contracts of the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and municipal judge. The employment is in the interest of the city, and the special counsel will be employed by and report directly to the city council as provided for in the city charter. Anyone wishing to second that?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
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 The motion fails, then, as it's a tie vote. We'll move on, then, to item number 19, then. Discussion of Letter from the Parks and Recreation Committee. Again, this is an item that I had requested. We had received a letter from the Parks and Recreation Commission that was directed to all of the city council members with a recommendation regarding soccer fields. Mr. Hall, is there any comments that you would like to make on this? Or Mr. Latrell?
Good evening, Council. Keegan-Latrell, Public Works Director. Not so much comments as to the letter from the Parks and Rec, but comments as how it pertains to the CIP. With our first CIP workshop, we got information from the council. Staff went back and reviewed all the projects, finished putting together the binder. And in that review, working with the city manager, Parks and Rec Director, we have removed the multi-use soccer field from the proposed CIP. That was the 400,000 multi-use field. There was also another one for just over 100,000 that was in there for other soccer fields, parks. That one, we're proposing to revise that to be an expansion of the dog park. That would include irrigation, sodding, dirt work, other such. Next Tuesday, when we do the next workshop or council, special council meeting, I'll provide more detail on that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, I had requested this, so I have a couple of comments to make. One, I know that following the last CIP workshop that we had, that it was said, anyway, that those were removed and when we received the packet for the meeting that wound up being canceled, I noted that those had indeed been removed. The main reason why I wanted to discuss this is, one, to say thanks to the people that do serve on the Parks and Rec Committee. It's something that people give their time and effort, so I do appreciate that. They took the time to apparently listen to public comment and formulate this letter. I assume there was a vote on this among the committee members. Mr. Hall, is that something you're aware of?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, it was forwarded to the council. I invite committees to communicate with council. I think that's the purpose of these committees. The concern that I have is when we do get recommendations like these, I attach the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project list to this. I would like to see committees take a look at when they make these recommendations, how might that fit in with everything else that we're trying to accomplish here in the city? On that list, I believe the capital improvements requested by the Parks and Recreation Department exceeds $38 million right now. We have a budget of about, I think it's around $34 million a year for our general fund. It's difficult for us to determine, well, what is the priority of a request like this? They put in here that we don't have a designated soccer field. I think we actually do have one. It's at the high school, and I understand that's not under the direct control of the city, but there is a soccer field that is available. I know that Veterans Park, some of the green space in that park is also being used for soccer fields. The middle school, the elementary schools, all have athletic fields that might serve that purpose. There are plenty of parks in Boulder City. While we might always like a few more, we have an awful lot of green space in clean green Boulder City. So, I would just suggest to the committee that if they are going to make these recommendations, and I do encourage them to do that, please take a look at how these things are going to fit in. The price on the soccer fields that were originally proposed, the initial construction cost was $400,000. I'm not sure what the annual maintenance on that would be, but I'm sure it would run into the thousands of dollars. We actually support our Parks and Recreation Committee here substantially with the amount of funds that we put in. I think they're right up there with our fire and police departments. That's a bit unusual for municipalities to devote that kind of resources to Parks and Rec, but I think that's also what makes Boulder City Boulder City. So, again, I would just say, as far as suggestions to them, please keep the suggestions coming, but please also take a look at, when you make a request, how is that going to fit in with what else we're trying to do? We have a pool that we're trying to do something with. That's a substantial cost there. So, if they could help the city council by giving us information on what they feel is a priority and how that expense would fit in with our budget, I think that would be very helpful. Anyone else wishing to make any questions or comments?
As in regard to this particular item, the soccer fields, in the letter, they said that members have heard desires for the members as well as the public regarding this project and that they would allow more soccer to be able to be played. And I just, I think sometimes these things are kind of a matter of how we use those fields and how we allow the public to use those fields. So, if there's a reason that we're not allowing more use on the fields, whether that's because we're charging a charge for that or that our programming, you know, schedule isn't readily available to use those kind of things, you know, there's other ways that we can look at those things so that the public can use the things that we do have. Because we do have a lot of green space, and I understand, I understand this because I'm, okay, so, I'll have to, my disclaimer is that my daughter is a soccer player and has been playing soccer here for the last five years and is on the Boulder City High School team now. And without the use of what we have, that wouldn't have happened. But I know that in the policymaking with how the uses, that sometimes it is hard for teams to be able to go out and use them, either because they don't have access to the lighting or they don't have access to nets or goals. So, if there's other things that we can do to help to accommodate this need without purchasing another field, that might also be restricted, that we need to look at those items.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Latrell, Mr. Hall. That brings us, then, to our last public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during this comment period? Time limit is five minutes, and you may speak on any item. Mr. Siniakan? On any issue, I should say.
Any issue, thank you. I applaud and appreciate all of you. It is such a welcome breath of fresh air to have you here, and I support you. You represent the master plan. The last council did not. There was a significant vote over question one about which way the city was going. We wanted to stay with controlled growth. They wanted to modify that, and there was a predominance to maintain controlled growth. The decision that I disagree on, and it's because not of your process, but because of your history, you don't have the background. When Mr. Morris was hired, his resume was hidden from the public. It was deficient. He didn't have the requirements that met the test. Mrs. Crumb hid that resume and didn't release it. She got an open meeting law violation from the Attorney General, as did Tammy McKay assisted in that. It's all public record under 13897243. You asked Mrs. Crumb for the resume on the phone. She insisted and would not give that to you. That perpetuated the open meeting law violation. Tonight, Mr. Morris argued in his own pecuniary interest without disclosing it. He has financial benefit by not having this go forward with a special prosecution. Not prosecution, that's the wrong word, it's early. Mr. Morris accused you of an open meeting law violation. He's threatened you again with an open meeting law violation under Section 18. Mr. Morris has charter violations. His contract is a violation of the charter. He was employed while his son was working for the city, which is a charter violation. He had a plane under Flying Monkeys at the airport and didn't disclose it during deliberations. I had 25 things that I've submitted to the mayor that I would like to have come up for a review in public because there hasn't been a review since September 20th, 2017. Mrs. Crumb smiles. I don't think it's a laughing matter, Mrs. Crumb, to be accused by the Attorney General of violating the open meeting law assisting. I don't have to. It's not, that's a violation. I'm speaking, okay, Mrs. Crumb violated the open meeting law for the benefit of Mr. Morris and Tammy assisted. You don't have that benefit, and I respect that, but the two of you have the right to look into this and bring this up for reconsideration. Mr. McManus and Ms. Folden do not have the right for reconsideration. I would suggest that you look at Mr. Mc, how he was hired and the facts surrounding his contract and the other things, the open meeting law violations and all the rest of it, and consider appointing a special attorney because he's going to be negotiating for people that assisted him in getting him hired under an open meeting law violation. And I find that to be suspect and wrong, and I don't blame you for not knowing the history, but I do have question about this process going forward under the circumstance. So, I leave it to you to decide if you want to reconsider if you study 13897243 and talk to Mr. McManus about Mrs. Crumb's participation and Mrs. McKay's participation in hiding the resume. Tammy McKay was asked for the resume also. Going on, I think it's wise to reconsider Track 350 for a number of reasons. The appraisal, it's poorly designed, there are other options that are open to us. The last point I want to look at is the traffic has dropped on the highway 35% in one direction, 75%, 70% in the other. That's a fact. That's an average of a 50% drop. I talked to businesses on the highway. Their business was down 30% on the businesses on the highway before you started the traffic improvements. They're now down 40% in sales. That's very significant. Luckily, McDonald's and Jack in the Box have the money to reinvest. I don't know if other people do, but if you take a survey, you'll find they've taken a significant hit. I can't imagine how the other businesses, when you have a 50% drop in traffic, that they aren't affected as well. And I think that there was a cherry picking of which businesses were asked. The Copy Cup is a destination restaurant, and so is the Southwest Diner, more so than the antique stores and many of the others. Mr. Noyla and staff have done nothing to help promote the city. There was a plan and meeting through Jill. There was a plan made, nothing went forward, and I'm concerned that something could be done, that even something so simple as to have more events where a person was hired to handle that, and they would be paid out of the proceeds of the events. There's a drop in traffic of 10,000 cars per day out of what was 35,000 cars per day. That's huge.
Please work at wrapping up, please.
Oh, okay. I just, I'm sorry if I've gone over. I would think that that would be worth investigating, talking to the business owners, and seeing if it's worth doing more with special events. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Johnson?
First thing, I would suggest that Mr. Siniakan read item five on this agenda that's available. Listen, after having endured the meeting here, I'm confused. What's the issue on bristlecone? Has the development standard been removed and eliminated, or is it still in effect? I don't know if you can answer that.
Sir, what would do?
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask that question, but that got my attention tonight because it was just a few days ago that somebody told me that that had been changed, and it impacts me.
Mr. Johnson, you know, we don't get into discussions during public comment, but you may want to speak with either Mr. Mays, the Community Development Director. He may be able to help you with your question on that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Levitt?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just had a few comments tonight. One of the things that I wanted to comment on is I know when many of you are running as part of your platform, you talked and encouraged a lot of openness and transparency, and I know that Councilman Adams in particular talked about that. And so, I, even though I don't want the meetings to go longer, I don't understand why there hasn't been public comment allowed after each agenda item. I know the previous mayor was heavily criticized for reducing public comment from five minutes to three minutes, but, and there has been a lot of public comment tonight because many of the items were public hearings. But I know I've sat in the audience on many council meeting nights when people are frustrated that they couldn't get up and comment after the agenda item and had to wait clear to the end of the meeting before they made a comment. So, I think that's something that you should consider. Also, I want to thank you for your vote on agenda item 13 or 14 or the combination thereof. I think that was the right decision. One of the things that I remember from my many trainings on the open meeting law, and I heard said many times, that you need to err on the side of caution. And that was one of the things that came up in my mind, because I know there was an intentional violation, but people who live in that area wanted to be heard on that issue, and so this allows them to be heard. And, which reminds me of the third thing that I want to talk about, which is that as a council, you represent all of Boulder City. And so, to hear the comment, that section of town in kind of a negative connotation in a push-pull with the rest of the town really was offensive to me. People who live in that area are passionate about what's going on around them, just as people in the historic district are. And I think we remember as- And I think we remember, as has been stated here, we're a community, we're a city, we all live in different parts of the city, and we're all concerned about our own neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Okay, this has been interesting. So, the behavior that's been shown here today is a little bit embarrassing, in my opinion, towards the staff members especially. They're doing their best, in my opinion, to help make sure this city is run to its top notch. I've seen worse in the past in many years and many years ago. Speaking of that, the comment that you made, Ms. Folda, was very disrespectful, in my opinion. I'm very upset. The comment that you made, as I second everything Ms. Levitt said, the comment that you made that people in that area, that's very disrespectful. You don't know who lives over there. I haven't seen you over there. I haven't seen you campaign over there. I haven't seen you at all show your face over there. And to sit there and say that a certain group of people over there, that's kind of offensive. You would be surprised how diverse that neighborhood is. It's not just one particular group, and it's not because you're different. That comment was very interesting, coming from the city council, that's unprofessional, in my opinion, that you say that a different group of people now appear that we have this adverse action. Saying so from that point on, it's very interesting that we, as neighbors, have not got notification of this change or any information on this. You say that it's been there forever. Obviously, I was told it's been there for years upon years, but I'm a recent purchase, excuse me, I recently purchased a property in that lot, or in that area. So, for me to be notified right away, you're kind of saying, what your comments have said, making me sound ignorant, that I am not aware of what's going on. I have a life. I have kids to take care of. I have a job to do. There's a lot of things for me to take care of in this, in this world. So, I do my best to stay focused on the community. So, I would expect an apology to at least that neighborhood and this patch pushing, this pushing back and forth. That's just my opinion on that. The Bristlecone issue, I think is very important. I do agree that it was not discussed with us as a neighborhood. It is very important for a median, maybe I didn't discuss it earlier very well, but I'm pretty sure the RTC can tell you that a median down a very busy street is for a good safety purpose. And why I say that is because there's a lot of children in that area as well, and like I'd mentioned earlier, come during Halloween, and I'll be glad to walk you around that neighborhood, show you how busy it is and how dangerous it can be when you don't have a separation of the street. And come, oh, 4th of July as well, 4th of July is even like twice as worse, so feel free to come down during that time, and we can show you how that works. The comments, like I said earlier, kind of embarrassing. City Attorney, I apologize for the citizens taking a hit on you, but also Mayor McManus, you mentioned a comment about dictatorship. Like Peggy Levitt said, and I have the same agreeance, you took an oath of office, all of you took an oath of office, to protect this constitution, protect the city, and listen to its citizens. It's not your decision, it's our decision, at a city. As a city, as a whole, as a community, we tell you what we want. And your comment earlier of, it's not a dictatorship, but nobody wants to hear our comments, and if we make, if we make a decision, well, then so what? That's the way it is, like we made a decision. That's how I understood it. I could be wrong. I would apologize if that was true. But to imply that it's your decision and that's the way it's going to be, no, it's all of us. It's everyone in this room. It's everyone in this community. We're here to tell you what we want, and you represent a whole community. Again, we took the oath of office, I myself, a public servant, have taken the oath of office to help the public, to do what they tell me to do. And I have done that, and I continue to do that, and I hope you guys hold up to the same standard. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Siniakun, you've had your chance at the podium. Mrs. Hoskins?
Hi, I'm Judith Hoskins. I would just like to say evidently, this gentleman hasn't attended any of the other meetings that we've had for years, or got to be very contentious. I think maybe people shouldn't be as sensitive as they are when certain issues come up. We're all adults, we've all been through a lot of things, especially I have. I'm 80 years old, I've been through plenty. There's plenty more to come. But addressing the council and saying that they can't make decisions, we voted for you to make decisions. We give you our ideas. You make those decisions. We don't make those decisions after you, we give them to you to discuss and debate. And I'm sorry that anyone was offended. I know all of you, and I know you don't mean to offend anyone, and I know none of the council, and none of the people that work for the city intend to do that either. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing no others, we'll close public comment, and that will bring us to our council reports. We'll start at that end. This time, Councilwoman Folda?
Nothing to report.
Councilwoman Bridges?
I went to the Southern Nevada Water Authority Board Meeting, and two things were discussed that I thought were interesting. One is, they did approve the assistance agreement with the Bureau to receive funding of $300,000 for the Water Smart Landscape Rebate Program. So, if you have grass that only the person who mows it stands on, they suggest that you remove it and that they will pay you, the SNWA will pay you per square foot, I believe, for the removal, and then you can put lovely landscaping in. And then there's the general discussion that I've heard before about our million gallons a day of effluent that goes out into the desert, and they are seriously discussing, there's certainly nothing in writing, nothing in the budget, but a way to assist Boulder City to use that, to get that back into the lake, to be able to, someone to be able to acquire return flow credits on that water rather than just watering the desert. So, and now, they talked about numbers like $25 million, that it would be an expensive project to do that, but they certainly are taking a serious look at it. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I guess I'll just report, the next Southern Nevada Health District meeting I have at the Board of Health is this Thursday. For those of you who don't know, the CHO did resign recently, but that's not necessarily what we're discussing at this upcoming meeting, but just thought I would give that update. As far as comments about making sure that your voice is being heard, if anybody wants to reach out to me, my email is jadams@bcnv.org. I have gotten some comments that I'm not always the best at getting back to them, I do get a lot. So, if, for whatever reason, I don't get back to you, you can call me. The number is 702-930-4685. This meeting's being recorded, in case you didn't catch it. And then also, as I'd like to thank everybody for the birthday, I was reminiscing, actually announcing that today is actually my sister's birthday. She turned, maybe she doesn't want me to tell everyone how old she turned. And yesterday was my father's birthday, he just turned 60 years old, and my birthday is coming up on November 3rd, so maybe I'll share this cake with them tonight. So, thank you very much for the birthday wishes.
Thank you. And I'll just echo what Councilman Adams just said regarding contact. You know, we all have email addresses that are on the city website. My cell phone number is listed on there as well. I'm more than happy to speak to people about the issues they have, just as Mr. Adams said. I may not get back to you for a day or two, but I will do my best to do that. And lastly, tonight, Councilman Warren Harhay was not available for the meeting tonight. My understanding is that his health is not good at this point, so, you know, thoughts and prayers to Councilman Harhay. Hopefully, he'll be improving. Thank you, and with that, we will adjourn the meeting.